Have I been advised that a court is present? I call the town meeting of West Boylston of May 20th, 2024 to order. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment. There are a number of people who have departed. Our friends and neighbors who died, including some who provided service to the town, including Michael Capone, Gary Flynn, Nancy Lucier, David Mercurio, Jane Simorano, and David Sweetman. I'm sure there are others. Let's just take a moment of remembrance in silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Anyone who is not a registered voter in the town of West Boylston? I need you to be quiet, please. Anyone who's not a registered voter in the town of West Boylston needs to be in the front two rows over here. If we need more space, let me know. But if you are advising a town board or committee, it is okay to sit at that board or committee. On votes requiring a simple majority, we'll take the voice vote. No yelling, just a simple aye or nay is sufficient. If it's too close, we'll use the voting cards. Voting cards look like this. You should have got one when you came in. I think there's still some left if you didn't get one. We will be going through the articles. And if you think that it should be amended, the motion to amend must be specific, stand in the affirmative, and needs to be on an amendment form available from the town clerk. The simplest way to do an amendment is to delete whatever should go out and to add whatever should be added. Don't try to be staple there. If a two-thirds vote is required, typically we'll take the voice vote. If we can be unanimous, that makes my job easy. We're not here to make my job easy, but I appreciate it. So if we're unanimous, that's great. If we're not, that's fine. Vote your conscience. I will try to take an assessment of whether the voice vote is two-thirds or not. If it's not, if I can't tell, then we'll use the cards and count. There are microphones here and here. If you have something to say, a comment, a question, I ask that you make your way down to the microphone, single file, no pushing. We don't need to be fighting for the microphone. As long as everyone is polite, we'll get a chance. But please do not sit in your seat and raise your hand and wait to be recognized in order to speak on a motion that has already been made and seconded and that we're actually discussing. Just come down to the microphone, line up, and be sure to state your name loud and clear because the town clerk needs to record it, along with your address here in town. When you're at the microphone, that's when it recognizes you to speak, if you're going to be allowed to speak. And you should. We can only vote on the matters that are before us. So please keep your comments to the matter that we are discussing at that present time when the discussion is happening. Don't go back and talk about something else. Don't jump forward to talk about something else. We don't typically get hung up on rules or procedure. Politeness generally governs our town meeting. And I ask, even though it's hot and crowded, please still be polite. These are your friends and neighbors, and you're going to see them some more. I do refer to town meeting times. And I'll sometimes run down and ask town council if I don't know the answer offhand. But otherwise, I try to use judgment, and that assert the town well. And I will continue to try to use that judgment for your benefit. If you please, at this time, silence your mobile devices. You don't want them disrupting the meeting. And at this time, a motion is in order to waive the reading of the remainder of the warrant and the return of service thereto, and to refer to it as subject matter only. Is there such a motion?
So move.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Article one. Authorization to hear the reports of officers and committees of the town. Is there a motion?
Christina Padonia, the forecourt. I need the town vote to hear the reports of the officers and standing committees of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation or presentation? Okay. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Let's hear the reports. Do we have someone presenting for the council on aging?
Open space.
This is on, okay. Good evening. Mike Pecar, 22 North Main Street. The town open space implementation committee is updating its open space and recreation plan with the assistance of the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. The plan establishes goals for the town's future conservation and recreation resources and is a prerequisite for state grants that will help fund those goals. Public participation is an essential part of this plan. So the committee has put out a survey, which is your chance to communicate to us your own priorities for open space and recreation here in town. There are hard copies of the survey out on the table out there and a QR code that you can scan to do the survey. The survey deadline is the 16th of June. And we hope you can participate in this important process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pledge.
Good evening. Chris Burgland, Finance Committee. I want to just give a quick update. I want to thank Greg Zakarian, Mary Foley, Jason Rockaway, Queen Archibald, Murphy, Ray McCall, all dedicated members who worked very hard this year to provide an educational session conducted last Monday at the Senior Center. Many of you were there, and thanks for your participation. If you weren't, I certainly urge you to go out on the town website and you can view on the WPTA has that full form. But a lot of good education on our budget and how we got to where we are. Next slide. Great. So I'm only going to give you one slide. There were some thirty-seven slides. Don't worry. Just some of the keys that we hit on that I think is really important to know. Over the years, why we're feeling the pinch of, you know, not sufficient resources to fund the budget. And some of the challenges we've had, state aid hasn't been keeping pace, whether it be Chapter 70, whether it be pilots, whatever. They're just not moving at the same pace, growing at the same pace that our budgets and inflation are. Prop two and a half inadequate for rising expenses and inflation. It's just, you folks all know what it's been like over the last three years. Town is subject to those same constraints. New growth. We have limited new growth because we have so much protected land. Fifty percent of towns are underwater. One-time funds. We benefited back when Foley did from ARPA funds. The schools benefited from ESR funds. That were one-time stimulus funds that really kind of got in our, gave us a shot in the arm to fund some of these programs. Those are gone, so that's no longer our. Also want to thank the schools for all the work they did getting this together. Free cash, conservative budgets, limited free cash. So we've had some occasions over the years, and I know it's free cash, unexpended revenues. So what that gives us the ability to do is mid-year to do some budget fixes. So if there's a, one of the things that we did was we actually funded at one time the cookout at the Senior Center for the initial, their initial term for free cash. It's now part of the budget. It also gives us the ability to fix personnel budgets if you have people out on disability and so forth, high overtime and so forth. That gets limited with this, with reduced revenues. School funding, that kind of falls back to the one-time stuff, as well as the Chapter 70 limitations. Increased expenses. Our fire chief was very diligent in re-staffing the department so that we have a very skilled force from the standpoint of emergency response. That's benefited, you'll see later in the meeting, benefited the town by increasing our budget funding source, which is ambulance receipts, doubled in the last five years. So that's a benefit, but that was one of the things that cost us. Extraordinary increases in insurance, you guys all know that. We all go through that with our homeowners insurance and so forth. Health insurance, retirement benefits going up. And we have no control over that. That's just a cost that gets laid on us by the, oh, we do have some control. I'm not going to say that. And our insurance would be committed as a great job, controlling as much as they can. As you know, health insurance has gotten substantial. And mandates, state and federal mandates. I mean, we love to have early elections and everything, but that's something that the state just came up and said you have to do, and we have to staff it, we have to get change for it, so. So that's just in a nutshell. And I just want to kind of get your appetites wet and just understand, really urge you to go back to that presentation on, it's on the website, because there are some really good questions that were brought up by the residents. And I think all of, amongst the schools, the select board, and the income, I think we all, you know, tried to answer this. But thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Other towns' boards, town boards or committees? I believe Representative O'Day also had something that he wanted to say at this time.
Good evening. It's great to be here at town meeting. This is quite the turn-up, Pat. I had no idea you had so many friends. This is unbelievable. For some of you who do not know this, this is Pat Crowley's last town meeting that he will be on the board. He's stepping down. So I'm here from the State House to offer a little word of, not condolences, Pat. Condolences for us. I think that's truly the right word for the town. We really want to say thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you've put in over the last eighteen years. I think it's around that number. And, you know, you're going to be greatly missed in your role on the board, the select board. When you started, it was the Board of Selectmen. We've moved on from that, Pat. It's now the Select Board. And so if you'll bear with me, take a moment of personal privilege to read a citation that I bring from the State House. Commonwealth and Massachusetts House of Representatives be hereby a nominal to all of the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers a sincerest congratulations to Pat Crowley in recognition of your dedicated public service, your fiscal responsibility in mentoring, which will leave a lasting legacy of positive impact and community stench. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all of your endeavors. Signed by Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and State Representative Jim O'Day. And if I could give this to you, it would be a great honor. Congratulations, Pat. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Article two, authorization to borrow in anticipation of revenue and to enter into a compensating balance agreement with the bank. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article two as printed in the warrant, leading the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
There's a second. Thank you, Mr. Burgland. Any presentation or explanation of the article?
One moment.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This is the standard article that allows us to borrow funds in anticipation of revenue that we're going to receive. It is very rarely used as we have a good positive cash flow in town.
Thank you. Town boards or committees, any comment or recommendation?
Finance Committee votes to endorse this.
Thank you, endorsed by Finance. Any others?
Can we just hold on? Can we make sure the lights are on?
That those rights are controlled by the school. Some of these are controlled by the school and not me.
Let's just check the microphones if we would, please. Okay, so we had a motion and a second and an endorsement. An explanation and an endorsement. Is there any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. And if you're out in the hall, I'm going to need you to come in if you're going to vote. If you're out there, you cannot expect a vote to be counted. I can't force you inside. There are about ten seats around here now. So you could come in and sit down. If you don't want to, understand, we can't count your vote if you're out there. Okay? So that being said. If the seats are full, then I will consider opening the overflow room. If the seats are not full, I will not entertain opening the overflow room. So the overflow room is not going to be open unless all the seats are filled. So that being said, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article carries. Motion carries. Articles passed, sorry. Article three, authorization to expend funds in anticipation of reimbursement of highway, of state highway assistance aid. Is there a motion?
I move the town vote to approve Article three as printed in the warrant, leading the words, or take any action relative thereto.
There's a second. Thank you. Any explanation?
This is the standard annual authorization to accept Chapter 90 funds and to borrow in anticipation of these funds. Current fiscal year 2025, Chapter 90 portion is $290,745.35. We have historically not needed to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement as staff diligent to seek a timely reimbursement from the state.
Thank you. The room needs to be quiet while the presentation is happening, please. Bunch of seats right here. Raise your hand if there's a seat next to you. You still have to keep your hand up as long as you did before. Thank you very much. Town boards and committees, any comment or recommendation?
Finance Committee voted to endorse this article.
Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public on this article? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Article three is. Article four, authorization to amend the personnel by law and to amend the classification and compensation plan so as to provide employees a cost of living pay increase in fiscal year 2025, two percent. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make motion to see if the town will vote to amend Section five, Part A, A, Classification and Compensation Plan of Personal Bylaw to reflect a cost of living adjustment for all wage rates by two percent, or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Any explanation, presentation? That sounded like four.
But the motion is, I move for the town to vote to amend Section five, Part A, A, Classification and Compensation Plan of Personnel Bylaw by amending the compensation plan table to reflect a two percent cost of living adjustment for financial year 25. That's what this is.
I'm going to take that as you've amended your motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Say the right thing. Explanation is, this is an annual adjustment of the wages on the non-union personnel as printed in the page.
There's a pink handout in the packet that the folks have? You're invited to refer to your pink handout at this time. Town boards and committees, any comment or recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Article five, authorization to set the salary of elected officials. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Ross. I'm a Board of Selectmen. I move the town vote to approve Article five as printed in the warrant, leading the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Is there a presentation or an explanation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This is an annual authorization to set the salaries of the elected. Elected.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any comment or recommendation? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Article six, authorization to transfer unexpended funds from fiscal year 2024 appropriations. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to transfer the unexpended balances of fiscal year 2024 appropriations and any other available funds to fiscal year 2024 appropriation accounts as follows. Transfer from group health insurance premiums to police salary and wages, $70,000. From DPW salary and wages to DPW purchase services, $20,000. From snow and ice salary and wages to snow and ice supplies, $16,610. From snow and ice purchase services to snow and ice supplies, $3,534. From group health insurance premiums to snow and ice supplies, $86,96. From fire purchase services to public safety headquarters purchase services, $8,000. From veterans benefits to town report, $50. From veterans benefits to assessor salary and wages, $500. And from veterans benefits to Medicare Town Share, $10,000 for a total transfer of $214,790.
It's quite a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation or presentation on this?
So this is the annual budget fix article where there are some line items that are short money and other line items that have excess capacity. So we move the money so that we're still within balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendation or comment?
Finance Committee voted to endorse this article.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Article seven, authorization to pay bills from previous fiscal year. Is there a motion?
I move to pass, I move to pass over Article seven.
Second.
There's a motion to pass over. I don't think that there needs to be any discussion. So if someone really wants to discuss it, I'll entertain it, but. Great. All in favor of passing over, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article. Article eight. Authorization to appropriate money to the sewer enterprise account for fiscal year 2025. Is there a motion?
I move the town vote to approve Art layers printed in the warrant, leading the words, or take any action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there an explanation or presentation on this?
Yes, sir. This is the annual appropriation of expected sewer revenues and available sewer funds to offset the cost of running the sewer system and related costs in fiscal year 25. The sewer enterprise fund is separate from the town's annual operating budget and must be self-funding accounts in which sewer billing revenues and available funds will cover all expenses associated with sewer operations each year.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any comment or recommendation?
Finance Committee voted to endorse this article.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Article nine, fiscal year 2025 omnibus budget appropriation article. Is there a motion?
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,51,607 as printed in the town meeting warrant necessary to defray the expenses and charges of the town of West Boylston in fiscal year 2025 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, including the costs of public education, debt, and interest payments, and providing municipal services and reduce the tax rate by transferring the following sums. Raise and appropriate $28,948,657 from WPPBA receipts reserve, $61,950. From ambulance receipts reserve, $725,000. From artucity EMS fund, $16,000. From free cash, $300,000. Total, $30,51,607.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I believe at this time it's appropriate to refer to Appendix A. Do I have that right, town administrator? All right, the moderator's finally found Exhibit A. Hopefully you have as well. It's about three-fourths of the way through your packet. Perhaps two-thirds, if you'd like to follow along. We're looking at the right-hand column, and I'm just going to hit the subcategory by title. So the total moderator expense is $51 for this budget. Total select board, $7505. Town administrator, $214,200. Finance committee, $32,000. Town accountant, $20462. Thank you for your patience. Leave the last line. I read this town accountant. At $20462. At two hundred thousand, four sixty-two. Town audit, twenty-five thousand. Assessors, one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. Treasurer collector, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred. Town council, eighty-five thousand. Data processing, one hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and two. Town clerk, one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and sixty. Elections and registrations, thirty thousand, four forty-five. Conservation, one thousand eight hundred. Planning board, six thousand, two hundred and forty. Zoning Board of Appeals, three thousand. Public Safety Headquarters, forty-eight thousand, four hundred. Facilities Management, sixty-nine thousand. Town Hall Building, seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred. Print Town Report, one thousand. PEG TV, sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty. For total general government, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two, one million, sorry, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty. And if there's a hold that anybody has for any of these items, you can speak up now at the subtotal. Hearing none. Continuing on. Police, one million, nine hundred and nine thousand, seventy-five. Fire, one million, four hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty. Public Safety Communications, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight seventy-one. Building Inspector, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred. Sealer of weights, three thousand, eight hundred. Emergency Management, thirteen thousand. Animal Control, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred. Total Public Safety, three million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-six. Any hold? Hearing none. Education, fourteen million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen. Moving on. Streets and Parks, one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one. Snow removal, two hundred and forty-one thousand. Street lighting, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty. Trash removal and tipping, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, sixty-nine. Total Public Works, two million, twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Any hold? Looks like Board of Health is zero. Council on Aging, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and two. Veteran Services, seventy-eight thousand, one hundred. Total Human Services, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Library, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. Celebrations, one thousand, seven hundred. Total Culture and Recreation, five hundred and fifty-four, five eighty-five. Five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five. Continuing. Debt Service, nine hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Intergovernmental, eight thousand, fifteen. Employee Benefits Risk Management, six million, seven hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. ESCO Lease Payment, two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and eighteen. And the total in these other categories that I've just gone through, seven million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy. Any hold? I'm sorry. Seven million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seven. Grand total is thirty million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and seven. So there's some detail. Any explanation or presentation on this? Or is that sufficient? I'll entertain recommendations from town boards or committees at this point.
Select Board, you go.
Thank you. Others?
Finance committee voted to endorse this article.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public?
Good evening. My name is Bernie Dow. I live at 307 Prospect Street in West Boylston, Massachusetts. I have several questions, so I don't know much time to have, but I'm kind of flabbergasted by some of the salaries. I'll give you one example. Town Building Inspector, an increase up from one hundred and seven thousand to one hundred and fifty-eight thousand. That's a fifty percent increase, basically. His salary. Can anybody explain that? I understand that we, I don't know if you even have a building inspector anymore. I understand that the building inspector left and we have a temporary one or something. I don't know.
Is anyone from the town who needs to?
I can get my mic on. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jennifer Warren Diamond, the Town Administrator, through you to answer the question. This salary line item imposes multiple items beyond the Building Inspector. So we are, I believe the town of Boylston is voting tonight, but we are exploring an intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Boylston and Sterling to share one full-time Building Inspector and one part-time Building Inspector. That total cost of sharing the one and a half people, including all their benefits for the full-time person, would be seventy-three thousand dollars. You heard the moderator remark that there was no line item for the Board of Health previously. The Board of Health Admin and the Building Admin were merged into one position, and that position is now funded under this salary item at the rate of forty-five thousand. This also anticipates, we pay our inspectors, our electrical inspector, our plumbing inspector, and any of their assistants, a forty dollar per inspection rate. We do know that we have some pretty significant building projects that are in the queue for this year, so we have anticipated doubling those inspections needed this year for a total of thirty-seven thousand. So it's really a multitude of salaries. It's not one individual salary contained in that one line.
Thank you. Is there further question?
To address my allegation, if you will call it. Do we have a Building Inspector?
So we currently have an interim Building Inspector. If Boylston, which cross your fingers, called the selectmen, if you know any in Boylston, if they vote in the affirmative tonight, we will have an intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Boylston and Sterling, sharing one and a half building.
So through the chair, you're saying that the total building, the total cost of a Building Inspector, the one hundred and seven thousand for this fiscal year 2024 was based upon who?
So the hundred, Mr. Moderator, the one hundred and seven thousand was based on the Building Commissioner that is no longer with the town of West Boylston, as well as the administrative assistant who is in that office, as well as the plumbing and gas inspectors and the electrical inspectors.
And so the increased one hundred and fifty-eight will involve more people?
Go ahead.
Through the chair, I'll tell me.
It does involve more inspections, so we're anticipating that there will be more plumbing and gas and electrical inspections with double that figure. And it is now no longer, we are no longer going to have a Building Commissioner that is employed only by the town of West Boylston. We're going to have a Building Commissioner and an Assistant Building Commissioner employed by three towns.
So I'm led to believe, and by what you're saying, that because of this increase and those, if you know, through the chair, these other towns have substantial increases in their Building Inspector for the fiscal year as well?
I don't know the particulars. I know that Boylston and Sterling were already sharing. One of the things to note on a salary item when there is an intermunicipal agreement, unlike any of our salaries where our benefits live under that health insurance line, that big other category, all the benefits are rolled up and incorporated into the amount that we pay Sterling. So it's the salary plus the benefits to pay, we have to pay our one-third to the town of Sterling for their benefits.
Sounds all true to me. I don't know how many people understand that. I don't.
It seems like it's getting more expensive.
I'm sorry?
It seems like it's getting more expensive.
That's absolutely correct. It is more expensive.
And that's quite a bit more expensive. That's fifty percent more expensive.
So we advertised, we had a position. This is a little bit on the best.
Go ahead. I want to give someone else a chance to speak after this answer.
We advertised, the position was funded at approximately, off the top of my head, approximately fifty thousand dollars. We advertised quite extensively to hire a Building Commissioner, who, our outgoing Building Commissioner, worked for approximately fifty thousand dollars at twenty hours per week. They were retired, and they were able to do that. We advertised at that same rate. I can tell you that I had one person from, who's employed full-time by the city of Worcester, who was able to do the job on Saturdays only, and I had one person who was going to be doing it when they could, commuting from up by the Ipswich area. So the fifty thousand dollars at twenty hours per week, the market has told us that that is not, there's not an individual that has the license chart and certifications available at this time to take that position. We, when we lost our Building Commissioner, we have a temporary agreement with the Commissioner that is already shared between Boylston and Sterling, and that started this conversation about perhaps we could share not only the one person, but if we bring in another part-time person to build somewhat of a bench person in between the three towns, it also provides for vacation coverage and the like.
Thank you. I want to give the other residents a chance to speak. If you still have something, something different.
But I'll get to him. I find.
Thank you. Ready? No, please.
Oh, I'm Dave Thacker, 160 West Boylston Street.
You get real close to the microphone.
I'm David Thacker, 160 West Boylston Street, sorry. First thing I'd like to say is, I have inquired with the town clerks and the previous town clerk about oaths of office of all of you people, and none of you have valid oaths of office. That's required.
Okay, if you're, that's.
Required by the Constitution.
It's not within, that's not within the scope of what we're discussing.
That's fine. I'll talk about, so my question on this budget, is this, is this budget, assuming that the two and a half, Proposition 2 and 1/2 is gonna pass?
There's a separate motion. I believe it's displayed that way in the warrant.
Through the chair, good point. Is this, through the chair, is this particular Article 9, is this a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override question?
The portion that we're discussing is not a 2 and 1/2 override.
It is not. Okay, I have another, I have another question. The total trash removal, the total trash removal and tipping from five hundred and eighty-four thousand to six hundred and twenty-one thousand. Can somebody explain that?
Is there anyone from the town who can explain?
Also with that, is that, we had an increase in the bag for trash removal, in the bags, which is a hundred percent for the small bags. It went from five to ten dollars, an eighty percent increase in the large bags, it went from ten to eighteen dollars. Is that above and beyond this here? This new increase?
Is there anyone from the town who knows the answer to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. If you might miss out on some of these details, I do know our GPW director is here with us tonight. The trash bag fees for the actual bag themselves do not fully cover the trash program, so we pay, we have to pay our hauler, Republic, who charges us a rate. We also have to pay a tipping fee. They charge us a rate, and we have to pay for bags themselves. So the total trash budget does have an increase of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered my question, but.
Well, you might not like the answer, but it's an answer. If there's no, thank you very much. Further comment or question from the public? Am I done? Go ahead and make a line, and I'll try to get to you. If you want to comment or have a question.
John Benson, 247 Gooddale Street. I just have a question for clarification, because I know the 2 and 1/2 is coming up. As it was presented on the slide, it looks like what it was saying, and I don't want to get into the 2 and 1/2, I'm not trying to jump the gun on that one, but it looked like the numbers that were presented as to this vote was based on the 2 and 1/2. I can't remember, it was twenty-four million? What I want to know is, is a yes vote on this based on the assumption the 2 and 1/2 override will pass?
They are separate. Here and then there.
Good evening, everyone. James Conway, 37 Old Street. Just looking at some of these things, people want animal control. You're almost doubling that. It's fourteen thousand, five hundred this year, another twenty thousand, five hundred. So fourteen thousand dollar increase. Why is that? I've never seen an animal control officer in this town. I was a police officer in this town. I've seen them very few and far between. When they were here, they were great. The guys were amazing. They were huge. They were amazing.
Go ahead.
There was a gentleman that was animal control officer, and he was great. He was called out very rarely, so I want to know where another fourteen thousand dollars is needed for animal control.
Anyone from the town have an answer?
Sure, I can respond to that. So I think that as the collapse evidence, folks are not satisfied with your current animal control services here in the town of West Boylston. Similar to the last discussion, we are, this amount is anticipating that we are going to enter Rutland's Regional Animal Control Program. I don't know where you are an officer, but there's a number of towns that are in that regional animal control program currently. It's a pretty robust program. Right now, we have somebody that's on call. If they're here and they can respond, they're here and they can respond, but it's not like they're here waiting for a call. They get a very small stipend. What we're moving to is there's a full-time person in Rutland, and they would be able to respond more expeditiously than what currently is occurring. So it is a greatly enhanced service over what you're getting right now.
Okay. So it appears as though we're trying to regionalize with a bunch of different things like we did with dispatch here, so you're talking about dispatching, regionalizing with this, regionalizing with our Building Inspector, and it's costing the town people more money when more town people are paying, towns are paying into it. So what sense does that make if there's three towns paying into something? Why are we paying more money for what we should already have as a benefit in this town?
Because, because we.
Go ahead. Stop.
So right now, what we're paying, you get what you're paying for.
Well, ma'am, we're paying for these services that I just spoke about, and you're speaking about a gentleman or a female or anybody that would then give business or give service to three or four different towns, and that's fine. But if we had somebody that we're paying for in one town, shouldn't we not be paying more money for somebody that's benefiting three or four different towns? Doesn't that make sense?
So if you're referring back to the building position, we have advertised.
Building, animal control, dispatch.
Stop.
We've advertised.
Please. Please direct your comments through the moderator. It's what I'm here for, and it keeps us from getting overly amped. There's plenty to get amped about. Let's not jump the gun.
We have advertised that position for building since, I believe, November or December of last year. I already spoke to the applicants that we received at fifty thousand dollars. The alternative is that we have no Building Commissioner, and the state will assign a Building Commissioner, and they will charge us the fee, the Building Commissioner. Now, animal control is a greatly enhanced service. If we would like to have a person that is just dedicated to the town of West Boylston, working for our chief, that works Monday through Friday, nine to five, doing animal control, we can certainly do that, but that line changes to about sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Plus, they are insurance.
Okay. Next.
Police.
Lisa Wellington, 66 Mollman Street. As a former planning board member, I am wondering why the planning board's budget is going up forty-five percent?
Does anyone know the answer to that from the town?
Is there a thing, ma'am?
Mr. Moderator.
Thanks, I'm Dignally with the planning board. The, the actions needed that the planning board takes, required town meetings or public meetings, hearings, notices with the public and newspaper, and those costs have increased, and the work proposed coming in has decreased. So that is one of the reasons why we asked for increased budget. What we've done in the past, we've taken money, money out of fees that were paid by developers as part of their reviews, and that money's not coming in, so we need additional money to come from the town.
Thank you.
Sandy Miners, 20th Street. Mr. Moderator, I understand that Article Nine does not include the override. So that if we pass the thirty million, it's on the, on the number, we approve the budget, and we don't need an override to make that happen, correct? So my question is, where is the two and a half override warrant?
Mr. Moderator, through you, it is going to be a second motion under the same article.
Thank you.
Further comment or question? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have. There is a second motion to be made under this article, and I will entertain it at this time if there is.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to ra, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the additional sum of four million dollars as may be necessary to defray the expenses and charges of the town of West Boylston in fiscal year 2025 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, including the costs of public education, debt and interest payments, and providing municipal services, provided however, that the appropriation for such additional sum shall be directly contingent upon approval by the voters of a proposition two and a half so-called override question, allowing the town to raise such additional funds outside the otherwise applicable levy limit. Provided further, however, that if such override passes, the fiscal year 2025 budget funding sources shall be adjusted by reducing the amount appropriated from free cash by three hundred thousand dollars and increasing the amount to be appropriated from taxation by the same amount, and further, by increasing the total budgeted amount for public education by raising and appropriating the additional sum of three hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
Well, I can read an explanation, and hopefully it will provide some clarity. You see in the operating budget, the line item that will change on that operating budget will be, as far as the uses go, will be an increase in the education budget, three hundred thousand dollars. Funding sources on the revenue side will change from free cash of three hundred thousand dollars. That will not be expended, and we will look to the levy to grab another three hundred thousand dollars. So the two motions under this article, the first standard budget article to approve, that's the base budget, the first was to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty million, fifty-one thousand dollars, six hundred and seven dollars, as predicted in the town meeting warrant, all right, to defray the expenses and charges of the West Boylston in fiscal year 2025, including the cost of public debt and all of that good stuff. The second plan motion under this article will be to raise and appropriate the additional sum of four million dollars as may be necessary to defray the expenses and charges of the town of West Boylston in fiscal year 2025 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 2025, including the cost of public education debt, interest payments, providing municipal services, provided however, that the appropriation, you know, I'm basically repeating the motion. So the, again, it's three hundred thousand. What we're going to change is the funding source is reduced by three hundred thousand for free cash, goes to taxation, and then the education budget increases by three hundred thousand dollars also from free cash. So the total budget will increase three hundred thousand dollars.
Thanks. Endorsements, comments, or recommendations from town boards and committees? Thank you.
The finance committee endorse this article?
Thank you. Any others? School committee endorsed, thank you. Any others? Hang on, public comment. Hearing none. Let's hear from the public, please.
Okay. My name is Arlette Peterson. I live on Temple Street. We've been in this town since nineteen eighty-four, so we've been here for a while. And the prop two and a half, I'm okay with one year, but now I, if I understand it correctly, they were saying this four million deal is supposed to go for like five years or something, and they said, well, if we pass this, then we're not going to have to have these two and a half overrides every single year, whatever. I don't approve of extending it for a five-year period. I'd rather go every year or every two years so we can see what's going on with how much we're getting from the state, how much the expenses are going up and down or whatever, because once you raise the taxes, we don't get a decrease in our taxes very, very rarely. So if you're having this big tax increase, you can't tell me that a few years down the road, you're going to lower it, we're just going to keep going up, 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 up. And so I don't believe that it should go on for a five-year period. I think if we're going to do something, we need to do it just a few years, not think of five years down the road. I don't want to have the town have my money for five years. I'd rather decide, okay, in a year or two, is this something I want or not?
Thank you. Next comment here. You're next. Go ahead here. No, you're next.
Okay, that's actually my question. From what I've been led to understand, we talk about needing the money...
I'm sorry. Could you please identify yourself and tell us where you're at?
I'm Mel Anderson, 29 Valley Village, and we are on three generations of residents, but it doesn't matter. But anyway, from what I understand, we keep talking about two and a half for these five years of projects. But I was given to believe, once you negate prop, you negate two and a half, you override two and a half, that's forever. It's not just five years. So that means for the rest of our lives, we have no two and a half protection. Is that correct?
That's true.
So, so everybody knows...
You hear the question. Let's see if we can get you an answer. Go ahead.
Right, three, Mr. Moderator. What we're asking for is, what this article asks for, is an increase in the levy limit, right? So everybody's property, all the businesses' property creates a total end of property value in the town. That is taxed at the town's tax rate. So what we're asking to do is increase that limit as to the taxable limit of, by four million dollars. We're not asking to increase the budget by that. Not this year. This year, we have very specific requests on the, on the warrant. Every year from here on out, we're going to continue to have specific requests that you will be approving at town meeting for the expenditure, the raise and appropriate of your revenue. All this does is give us the ability, gives the town the ability to levy, to look to that unused levy limit, which is the difference between, so, so say today, we have ten dollars in levy limit, all right, I can go to the store and I can spend ten dollars, all right? If I add another four dollars to that ten dollars, I have fourteen dollars and go to the store. I'm not asking to spend that today. I'm saying I have that ability. So I'm asking to spend ten dollars and thirty cents today. So I've got in reserve a levy limit that enables me to, in future years, go up and raise revenue up to that fourteen dollar amount and spend that. Now, when I go to do that, every time I go to the store, though, I'm going to have to come to you and say, do you approve that? Because here's the budget, here's how we're looking to spend it. So each year, we are looking to the residents to provide that approval of how the town allocates those...
I'm sorry, I'm marking questions.
If you want to talk, please come get in line. Do not shout out from the gallery. That's out of order. Please don't do it.
I'm, I'm not getting, question is, if we override two and a half now, does that permanent? Because you keep talking about you need money for the next five years. But the question, that's not my question. If we override two and a half now, does that mean it's gone forever?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
See, that's bottom line. If we do this, it means we've watched the man out. We're not getting it.
Mr. Moderator, so the four million would be permanent, they added to the limit, but the two and a half percent would still be in effect each year?
You could not go above two and a half increase in taxes.
Right. So the two and a half percent next year would be include, inclusive of the four million if you override it tonight, and then it would be two and a half percent every year thereafter would be added to that limit?
Over that aggregate levy limit?
But, so if some other five million dollar project came along, you still could not raise, or this mega complex and the school and BPW on the fire, are, if you wanted more money than two and a half, you could probably ask for it?
It would be another override discussion.
I, I guess I'm conflicted. So everybody on this, this board is saying that the two and a half does not go away permanently. The, the prop two and a half, where you can't pull up more than two and a half, does not go away if you vote this four million today. For the next ten years, you, you can never come out at us for more than two and a half unless you would ask for it.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I did hear you ask about projects, and I think what you're referring to in that case is a debt exclusion. That's similar but different. Okay, so a debt exclusion, that was when you were building a building, that's an increase for your taxes for one project.
Yes.
Okay. An override is different than that.
I know that.
Okay. It is, the, the five years is applied to the four million. We were trying to figure out how much money would need over, above and beyond what the projections of normal two and a half, normal growth would be, and we were short by four million. But that increase is permanent. But every town meeting, voters need to come and decide how much, if any, of that additional authorization we will be using. So the, if you vote this evening in the affirmative, you still have to vote of how much we can use. So tonight, it's six hundred. Am I not talking? Okay, I'm pretty loud. So tonight, we're talking about using six hundred thousand of that. How much will use in FY twenty-six, FY twenty-seven precisely, we're not a hundred percent sure. We, we will have to come back, though, and make that argument again to you next night.
I'm not making myself clear. I don't care about how much is six hundred, four million. The bottom line is what we understood, most people thought two and a half prop was that you could not, if we voted to override, that you could raise our taxes more than two and a half percent. I'm not talking specific projects. If we agree to this override, does that mean that you can raise our taxes more than two and a half percent, if you want, because it doesn't go away? That's my question. Don't, don't worry about figures about six hundred four million.
So, Mr. Moderator...
Go ahead.
Proposition two and a half, it, it's not your taxes, it's not for your house. It's your house, first of all, may go up more or less than two and a half percent. It's, it's the whole pie can be increased two and a half percent, all the taxable property, not your particular taxes. So I just want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
However, it will, it is, the authorization is permanent, above and, this can go above and beyond two and a half percent. Yes. If we hit that limit again, maybe it's next year, maybe there's something unforeseen, and we're back here, we have to ask to go above and beyond that, the four million dollar authorization.
No, I would care if we, the bottom line is you can increase our taxes more than two and a half percent.
Yes.
From now on, if we...
With your vote at town meeting, yes.
But it's not from now on. It, it, it's not like we can just say, for the next fifty years, taxes are going to go up five percent, because we did away with prop two and a half. That's not what we're asking. Yes, taxes can be increased town-wide, above the two and a half percent, until we've utilized that full four million. If we were here to say, we want six hundred thousand dollars, because that's what we're asking to spend now, and that was the override, that additional six hundred thousand dollars is going to be, the totality of the tax raise is going to be two and a half percent plus six hundred thousand. Next year, if we use that full amount, it can only go up two and a half percent on what we had. So it's not an indefinite, you can go forever and ever and ever. It's until that four million dollar extra levy capacity is used.
Okay, so if it takes more than two and a half each year to get to that four million, you can go higher?
Correct.
But once the four million is spent, you cannot go more than two and a half percent?
Correct.
It's just very disappointing, because I was not making clear to anybody. I felt like this was not clear. But thank you for your...
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
So when, in the past, the state has had budget shortfalls, the governor has gone to and directed every department in the state to look at their department and find where they can make cuts for greater efficiencies in order to meet budget. Has the town specific, not, not, has the town asked for a budget, has the town specifically gone to department heads and said, where can you make cuts in greater efficiencies so that we can make a budget without doing a two and a half override? Has that been presented? Has anyone directed our pounds to do that? And I'm not asking if you did a budget. I'm asking, have you specifically directed to find other efficiencies? And if so, where is that report?
Does anyone from the town know the answer to that?
There's no report.
So there are two questions. One is, was it done? Two is, is there evidence that it was done?
So I can only speak to the town side of the budget. I can't speak to any exercises on the school portion of the budget. I can say that were the, the budgets as submitted by department heads funded at a hundred percent? No, they were not. Were department heads told to keep their budgets extremely lean and austere and not add, not be at a growth period? Yes, that's correct. Do we run an incredibly lean operation? Yes. I think that most department heads would tell you that they would jump at the opportunity for increased staff. You saw, just by way of example, you saw a seventy thousand dollar transfer for our police earlier this evening, because we can't cover when somebody's out except with forcing overtime. We're incredibly lean. And so if we are cutting budgets, there's no stat on these budgets, we're cutting into service cuts. Am I prepared to, we have a balanced budget this evening, you just approved it. Am I prepared to talk about specifically what those service cuts definitely will be in FY twenty-six? No. Will they be incredibly impactful? Yes.
So the answer is no, you didn't do anything?
That's not it.
It absolutely is. I'm asking a specific question.
That's enough. That's argumentative. Please stop. You got an answer. You might not like it. You got an answer. Next.
I, I can only ask one question.
You, you can, you can ask another question, but somebody else is going to ask their first question first. So let the gentleman behind you step in front, and you just step So, the gentleman behind you step in front and you just step behind him and we'll keep it ordered. Thank you. Right here.
Good evening, Paul Road Show, eighty Temple Street. So my first question was, for the four million dollars I keep hearing were allocating six hundred thousand, are there plans for the other four million, or is it just to raise the levy limit?
Anyone from the town have an answer to that?
Again, I can't speak to the school equation, I don't know if the superintendent wants to come up and speak. We are, the biggest drivers are general health insurance, which is a not, we're anticipating a six to nine percent increase over the next two years. Next year alone, I'm looking at about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for health insurance. Worcester County Retirement, a ten percent increase, that's about two hundred thousand. And we have been informed by our trash provider that we will need to, in the next trash contract, not only will we be probably seeing a significant increase, but we'll also have to move to tottering carts, the big carts, which we will have to purchase, so that will be a significant increase. Those are the three big drivers that are pushing this budget in future years into a various position.
So second question is, once we, if the two and a half override does pass, is there a limit, you can't ask for another override until X years? Or we could be facing another two and a half if we use a before name?
Anyone know the answer?
Well, I can answer the second part of the question first. We're only, if this is approved this evening, you're only authorizing an additional six hundred thousand of it this evening. So we won't use it up in a year. But you can ask for infinite number of overrides. I think the, obviously, there's a lot of folks here that are concerned with an override, rightfully so. I don't know that an override next year would be, have any chance of being successful.
Thank you. If it's short and has a short answer.
I actually forgot.
Go ahead. That's what we have in college. Over here.
Thank you, Jim Ryan, eight Monticello Ave, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Since the need this year is six hundred thousand dollars, why aren't we asking for a six hundred thousand dollar override?
Anyone from the town have an answer?
We didn't, simple answer is, we didn't wanna have to come back after folks make a very difficult financial decision to keep asking for override year after year after year, as some communities do. This is not a town that has a strong history of overrides, who haven't had a successful override since nineteen ninety-two or ninety-four. The last override, I believe in oh-eight, failed. So we don't wanna be coming back to you, asking you every year or every other year for another override, another override.
Just a follow-up. I guess my concern is, first of all, overrides should be difficult. And my concern is, coming in, it's actually an FY twenty-twenty-six concern, is we'll come into that budget season flush with three million four hundred thousand dollars in levy capacity. And my concern is, if it's there, it's gonna get spent quicker than if it wasn't there. And look, the second part of that is that we're having this discussion with the whole auditorium. The discussion of using the other three million four hundred thousand dollars is gonna be with a hundred people. And that concerns me, in terms of how wisely that will be used.
Thank you.
The only thing I could speak to on the other, about the amount of the override is, we're trying to maintain level services for the community. We're not looking to increase anything. This is, that's, that's the target of this override, from education to town services. That four million dollar levy capacity, and again, that's the total levy. Each type, there are many, there are many towns in the Commonwealth that do not tax for the full levy. Because they have the capacity, but they're, whether it be their budgeting, whether it be their town meeting, whoever the, the applicable authority, they choose not to spend to that levy authority. Unfortunately, and this is again, if you look at our presentation, we have always budgeted right to our levy capacity. And that's fine when expenses are growing at the same pace as two and a half percent. But when they increase, it's just not sustainable to maintain level services.
Thank you, right here.
Good evening again, I'm sorry if I just missed something, but where does the number four? I can say, I'm sure my name is James Conwell, but there's seven Hall Street. Where does four million dollars come from? I'm just asking because you were talking about six hundred thousand, you know, it times out by four, we're not getting the four million. I'm just, I don't know where four million dollars comes from. Why, is that just an educational guess based on you, all you guys' education and everything? And that's fine, if it is, I'm not trying to downplay it, but where does it come from?
Go ahead.
So again, I can't talk to the exercise that the school undertook. But what we, we both went through an exercise where we looked at the past ten fiscal years. We looked at trends over those past ten fiscal years, made a decision, is the ten-year trend what it is currently tracking? Or is the five-year trend what's tracking? Or is there something totally different? Is there something like, I'm gonna talk about the trash program, they're gonna be getting tolders? Is there something totally different that's coming? And then we adjusted those budgets accordingly. We projected out what our revenue side looked like, what our, our average of growth looks like, average of state aid, average of, we did the prop two and a half calculation. And the delta between the expenses and the revenue is where we came up with two million.
And there's a report on that over the next five years?
Is there, there is a spreadsheet, yeah, it's a record that you could request, sure.
Okay, fantastic, and the school wants three hundred thousand, we don't know, you can't speak to that, but do we know what that's for?
So the school is here, he stood up twice, right, to the folks, so if you let him speak, he can come up and speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we didn't put you at the table, you're a little bit of a disappeared.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent of Schools, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
The three hundred thousand dollars from, perspective from this year, will be used to offset our reliance on circuit breaker, which we're relying heavily to close our deficit this current fiscal year. Normally, we can absorb that and carry it over to the following fiscal year, which will be extended at that point. We can't do that this year, because we depend upon the incoming circuit breaker to close the deficit. So we'll just be going to a session this year.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
So I appreciate the candor that this is about keeping level services. So just to be clear, we're being asked to approve a two and a half override, not to give us better services, not to build something, but just to get the services we're getting today, we're gonna increase by four million. That's what we're getting. You vote for it, you get the same thing you're getting today. That's what we're getting, correct? Because it's level services. So we're doing this not to get better, but just to keep it where it is. That's what we're voting for, more higher taxes to get nothing better.
Go ahead, respond.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You can see in the budget, some of the questions that have come up tonight, this evening, as far as when we go to regionalize some of these services as well. We're gonna be getting improved services on, certainly on those line items. And again, to reiterate what the town administrator said, the, it looks like it's a huge increase, but really, we're not, we're paying the portion of their benefits in that salary line item as well. We're not gonna have that flow over to the, you know, insurance, the group insurance, right before, right on the last page of the ledger. So, yes, we're getting hopefully improved services, certainly from the animal control side. I know that seems like a huge steep increase, but not only will the service be better, but it's also gonna be, provide better accommodation for animals that they are able to, you know, to take off the streets and so forth and serve us. So, yes and no. I mean, I think we're not adding, I think we're hopefully improving what's being done. Correct?
Thank you.
Up in one sixty West Boilts Street, and I would like a yes or no answer to this question. You are, you need six hundred thousand and you're asking us for four million.
Is there someone who can answer that, yes or no?
Yes or no?
It's not a yes or no question.
I'm sorry, could you get a little closer to the microphone and perhaps talk a little louder?
I have a question about the four and a half. I understand what you're telling us, but as the law is written, you've got an intention, you have the law. My understanding is that you could, Phil, you could add four million to the tax levy this year. You could add four million plus two and a half to the tax levy next year. And on and on to perpetuity. That's the actual letter of the law. I realize what you're saying, but that's not your intent.
Let me, I wanted to fill your question, I tried to just let you ask, but it sounded a little confusing. So, it sounds like what you're asking is, tonight, there's a request to add four million dollars to the levy capacity. And then, next year, they could ask for four million more? And the two and a half, and two and a half more?
The two and a half is an override for this year, and it's an override that'll last forever and ever, from my understanding of the law. And that two and a half that you can add every year still goes on. So you got thirty-four million, and next year you've got two and a half, two and a half percent of that.
So the question then is, once we add this four million, the two and a half applies to a bigger amount later. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it applies, yeah, well, the two and a half will apply to a bigger amount, it'll be added definitely now. The two and a half is what we can raise every year without having to override. I understand the override allows you to increase the, increase the amount, four million this year, if you wanted, if you wanted to. I realize they're saying, yeah, that's not what we wanna do. But that's a possibility, and you could add that four million next year, and go on and on. I'm not saying that you're going to, and I know that that, you know, you've got the meaning, you've got the intent, and then you've got the letter of the law that you deal with.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
So, the estimated tax levy for twenty-twenty-five is twenty million seven thirty-three?
Do you speak up?
I'm sorry. The estimated tax levy for the prior fiscal year, twenty-twenty-four, was twenty million seven hundred thirty-three thousand dollars three hundred seventy-seven. All right? Two and a half increase over that is five hundred eighteen thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars. All right, so that's the two and a half. There's some new growth, we're allowed to factor that in, that does, that will impact the levy a little bit. I mean, that impacts what we expect, that doesn't have the effect you, but it comes up to them. So what we're asking to do is increase that twenty-one million plus twenty-five million plus. Does that make sense? This year, we're not gonna use that. Next year, we're not gonna.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
But it's going to, but that will go in to calculate the two and a half increase next year. So with the two and a half increase, we'll not be based on twenty-one million, it will be based on twenty-five next year.
Did that answer your question?
But it doesn't mean.
But it doesn't mean, but it doesn't mean, yeah, we're taxing you well. I mean, you guys, again, you're coming back and approving the budget, year in, year out. And I know, you mentioned, Jim, that, you know, a hundred people next year. Well, I hope we have more than a hundred people, because it's real money. I mean, this is, you know, I think it affects all of us, not just, you know, it's not just.
Well, I realize all the river of the town as well.
Yeah. Did that answer your question?
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you. Over here.
Paul Road Show, eighty Temple Street, second question came up, I have one, I forgot.
Go ahead.
Seeing how the six hundred thousand is mostly school-related, are there plans inside of the school to?
Two and a half. Three hundred, three hundred on the town side.
For the school portion, are there improvement processes put into place or thought of? Like, from my understanding, we got COVID money for free lunches, et cetera, is that still being offered, or?
Mr. Superintendent? Can you speak to that, please?
We're the superintendent of schools. In regards to the COVID money, that came over the course of three years, which is no longer. The district was very lean with their hiring. We were required to spend twenty percent of that money to address learning laws. Those positions, we're attempting, section one, that we're attempting to keep in our general budget, or what Matt mentioned. All those other positions are not continuing, because that's a grant funded, they were informed that those positions would not be available once that money went away. The three hundred thousand dollars, as I referenced earlier, the district is approximately thirty-eight percent of our budget, goes to special education, which is mandated by law, that we get to fill these students' educational obligations. And those expenses are increasing. I referenced circuit breaker previously, circuit breaker is the relief system from the state that, it's this equation that the state sets each year that funds some reinforcement for the special ed program. It can't be guaranteed every year, it fluctuates on the state level. We're relying on that relief that is coming in this year. Then going, we could carry it over to the following year, we can't do that, because we need to close our deficit this year. So that three hundred thousand dollars, if this were to pass, would be going to offset that expense for next year.
Thank you. Over here. Oh, is that it?
So maybe just a comment?
You can comment. Shorter is better.
As the other gentleman said, like, I think some here are probably more comfortable approving the three or six hundred thousand, medium million. It's not the tax figures you can give me about trash, et cetera. But I think, you know, leaving that three million dollar open check for future years might be the source why for most.
Thank you.
Somebody commented earlier, and this has been addressed, you have to come back, this isn't a blank check, we have to come back every year. And there was a comment about having a hundred people. Typically, these meetings are not like this. So if we approve this, it's incumbent on everyone here to have to diligently watch what's going on. And my question to everyone is, do you have that much confidence in the town officials that they're going to do it appropriately, or is it gonna be death by a thousand cuts? There were people here that expressed concerns about some of the changes in services, building inspector, with our, our animal control. These things are gonna show up every single year, and if we don't have, control it now by saying, no, we're not giving you four years, every year, people are going to have to diligently show up to keep an eye on this. But if it was only for one year, there would be a much higher burden on town government to make their case to the people. And they'd have to make their case to the people in detail every year, as opposed to giving the blank check and then hoping that everyone has the free time to show up on a, whatever day the town meeting is.
Thank you for the comment. Here.
Sandy, I wish on twenty eighth street. I first of all, I'm gonna say, I think this town is very well-run. I think we have a very diligent finance committee, they've put in a lot of hours. They went out of their way to have a presentation last Monday night, and it went and learned a lot. I think the select board does a good job, I think the town manager and the town clerk do a great job, and we're very fortunate to have them. And you can apply for that or not, but I think that. But I wanted also to say, I oppose this motion because, for the, I have three reasons. For one, it does feel like a blank check. Number two, when I was at the budget meeting last Monday, I asked about school building projects. And Mr. Pajami said that they have that online, and it's gonna hit our budget, and I applied to say, here, that's just about when this override is gonna be evaporated, and no one's gonna be sufficient. And I don't think that we should be pushing for a tax override and a debt exclusion at the same time. And so I think we should really head to events. And thirdly, when I asked the town manager if this budget, if this four million would last us five years, she could not give me a complete answer to say yes. And I understand that nobody has a crystal ball. But I do also understand that that was a little concerning to me. And with that, I'd like to call the question.
It is within the discretion of the moderator to end a discussion at an appropriate time. Since there's one person, maybe two, who are yet to speak, I think it appropriate to give him a chance if there's something new that's being brought up. I think it appropriate to give him a chance if there's something new that's being brought up. You have something new?
To size Sansone to Njuha Circle. I have kind of a question first, and then a comment, I guess. So my first question is, goes back to, a lot of you have been asking about the 600,000 and the 4 million. And, well, can you just use whatever you want of that 4 million? So, today, we're authorizing a 4 million levy increase and a 600,000 of that to be used this year. If I understand that correct, the town cannot just decide to use the rest of that 4 million this year. You can only use the 600,000 we are authorizing to you, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Second part of that question. Next year, fiscal year '26, if you want to use additional of that 4 million, is that a separate motion from the regular budget? Or is that just, you can use the, that money within the regular budget in the same motion as like we passed just a few minutes ago?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think, you know, obviously, I've stated this before, folks are quite concerned about this authorization. Rightfully so. So, do, do we have to call it out separately as how much additional? Do we have to? No. Can I say that it will be on a slide, and I think that the select board and the finance committee most likely feel the same way? I don't want to speak for them, but I would think that they would want to specifically call out that this is how much of that additional authorization we are seeking in the next fiscal year. That's a promise that I can make to you personally. You can credit that or not. It's not legally required, but, you know, you folks would be putting a lot of faith in town government, and I would support that.
Thank you. And you have, so, kind of a follow-up to that, there's been a lot of talk about what we can do without it. This year, I know we, there's talk about we'll take it from free cash. My question is, if this does not pass, and we keep the budget as it is, it's been voted, and next year, what would be, what, can somebody say, what is going to happen, or what would we lose? Like, we're talking about keeping it steady right now. If we don't pass this, and we don't do an override next year, which I think would be pretty likely, if everyone's emotions are the same as they are now, maybe Mr. Mahar and some of the people in town can talk about what can we expect to see in terms of cuts to services? Like, we're not going to level. Is it going to go down? What's that going to look like?
I think some of that's been answered. If there's some, some new cut.
Well, I don't think it's going to happen in this form.
Oh, go ahead.
You know, as Ms. Mike Gersma said, I don't have, first of all, to know exactly how short it will be next year. But if, depending on how short we are, I would say that services that are not essential, public services, are on the line. That, to me, I would put the trash program before eliminating any personnel. Although, would that be enough in next year? I don't know. But I can tell you, the trap, for me, this is just my individual opinion, the trash program would become before layoffs.
Okay. Superintendent?
I'm the superintendent of schools. For those of you who take the time or their schedules to join the FinCon meeting at the senior center last week, I thought the presentation was very sound and informative, and also non-alarmous. And I'm not prepared to predict the cuts for the school department next year. I'm not in that position. As we know, the state funding mechanisms are ever-evolving, and yes, we're low on service. The best I can commit to is what we do each year annually. We look at our staffing, we look at our non-professional status teachers, and make adjustments with those individuals if we need to. But I'm not going down with a rope for any potential cuts because it's a service.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Richard Johnson, 9 Wood Street. We're discussing two, which to me are two separate items. There should be two separate votes. Is that correct?
Help me understand what you mean.
Okay. This 600,000 deal. And then you've got a 4 million deal. They're two separate things altogether. So they should be voted on separately.
Thank you.
Am I correct?
Let me talk to town council. Because of the way this was moved, and the way that the, the motion is worded, and the discussion has gone on, I, I don't think that it's appropriate to divide the question. And so it is presented as moved. Thank you for your inquiry. But they are, they are bound together the way that this has been proposed.
They never should have been. Therefore, I am suggesting that we defeat the motion, period.
Thank you. There's a motion to end debate. There's no discussion of the motion to end debate. If you want to end debate, vote yes. If you don't want to end debate, vote no. All in favor of ending debate, please say aye, or yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Debate is ended. There being no further debate. The article, I'm sorry, the motion before you is the two and a half override. It's Article 10, second motion. Article 9, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. Yeah, I know, I know that voice. Article 9, second motion. The question having been called, debate is ended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hang on. We've already voted to end debate. So the motion is, should the two and a half override pass? So before, before anybody gets more confused. Okay, so we've ended debate. So now we're back to the main motion. In Article 9, second motion. Should the two and a half override pass? That's the motion before you. If you want the two and a half override to pass, you vote aye. If you don't want it to pass, you vote no, or nay. Be clear, Darren? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're going to have to count. I hope you can see why I might have been confused. You will need your voting card. You will need to be in the room. If you are not in the room, you may not vote. Okay? So, we need to get the tellers in position. All right, so we won't use tellers yet. I will try to look at your cards and figure it out. Okay? We may get to a count, but that's premature. Thank you. So. Majority. This is a majority vote. With simple majority, not two fifths. So, if you are in favor of the two and a half override, raise your orange card. Put them down. If you are opposed to the two and a half override, raise your card. Okay, you're right, we need to count. It was worth a try. We're now going to hold up a little yellow, um, orange. This is orange, not yellow. It's not even a shade of yellow. It's really orange. We're going to hold up the orange cards to vote. So this is to vote, yes, it's the same question. Should the two and a half override pass? If you are in favor of the two and a half override passing, please raise your orange card and keep it up until I say to take it down, even if your arm is tired. Hold it up with your other arm or something. Get your neighbor to help you. It's going to take us a little while to count it. You may put your cards down. Those are the yanks. If you are against the two and a half override as moved, please raise your orange card. It's gonna take us a little while to count them. You may put your cards down. Those are the yays. If you are against the two and a half override as moved, please raise your orange card. You may put your cards down. We're gonna tally the results. With a vote of one hundred forty-seven to two thirty-four, the nays have it. Article eleven. Article ten. If you are leaving, please leave quietly. Article ten. Seriously, please leave quietly, thank you. A vote to appropriate funds for capital improvement purchases, is there emotion? Yes?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to purchase or enter into a contract with the following capital items, with each appropriation being treated as a separate item. A, fire department backup generator, total appropriation seventy-five thousand dollars, appropriation source free cash. B, tennis court resurfacing, appropriation amount forty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, appropriation source free cash. C, basketball court resurfacing, appropriation amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars, the appropriation source free cash. D, two vans for the schools, the total appropriation eighty-two thousand dollars, the appropriation source free cash. E, a library boiler replacement, total appropriation thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars, and the appropriation source free cash. F, fire and apartment public works building, uh, and feasibility study, total appropriation four, two hundred thousand dollars, and the appropriation source free cash. And G, town hall air handlers, total appropriation fifty thousand dollars, the appropriation source free cash.
Is there a second? Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the Capital Investment Board has met several times to discuss the capital requests. Questions about a specific expenditure can be directed to the appropriate department head or county administrator.
Thank you. Uh, county boards and committees, any comment or recommendation on this article? And if you want to approve or endorse in part and decline in part, that's fine as well because there are seven, seven parts, and we're gonna vote them off separately. So, recommendations, comments? Thank you.
Uh, the finance committee and the Capital Investment Board, uh, board to endorse.
Thank you. Others? Hearing none. Uh, let's take questions or comments on each part, just so that we are focused on the, the line item, uh, in question because it was moved as separate parts. So part A, the fire department backup generator, any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? The ayes have it. Part B, tennis court resurfacing. Go ahead.
Hi, Christine Scotty, eighteen oh S., which tennis courts are you talking about?
Anyone from the town have answered that?
The tennis courts are good options.
Good answer.
So nonetheless, um, in one way, no.
Further question or comment from the public?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, go ahead.
Hi, name is Chris, five hundred street, Oakdale. Um, on the tennis courts, Pat Michael, helping list us with the million dollars on it. Um, the, uh, the fund that we use build the courts. Can I ask? Yes. Aren't there funds that could be used for that instead of free cash? That would make more sense?
Mr. Moderator.
So this is a, a expenditure that would be allowable under the CPC, but no grant was ever requested from the CPC, no vote was ever taken by the CPC to present to the county as coming out of the CPC.
So, in your opinion, would that make sense? To, to put that, uh, committee to, to give you that? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just think you probably have the most knowledge up to here, couldn't be wrong.
I mean, I, I can only speak for myself. Um, I will tell you that, uh, there are two, the last two big expenditures from the CPC were for Fire Park and Woodland Park, so I don't know how much of an appetite there would be to spend more CPC funds on more recreation.
Mr. Moderator, one more question, is there anybody here from, I know we've asked everybody, is there anybody here from the parks that are having to shut some light on this morning?
You can only run this, it'll run the Parks Commissioner. Um, we asked this as a capital request of the Capital Commission Board, and this is how it was, um, chosen to be funded. Uh, I can say that the tennis courts, the undergrads, all of those, try to handle both at the same time, near the end of their life, as far as the last time they had them surfaced. And the tennis courts are getting very bare and very specific spots related to excessive pickleball use. So just, uh, trying to keep them going so that we keep them, um, in good shape and don't have to, uh, come back for larger dollars later to try to fix them.
To clarify, I think the question was, um, is there a way to do it with some kind of grant money instead of free cash?
So I, I think I answered that at the beginning, we asked the, uh, Capital Investment Board for funding of this. Uh, we did not ask the CPC, it was an option. We were asked for capital requests, we put it forward, we didn't get specific on what the funding source would be, and I guess Capital Investment Board decided to find it out for cash. And they asked, or said no, go to CPC, that's something they would have done, but... So I, I guess the, uh, answer is if it was voted down, we could potentially use that for a funding source later. But I think free cash is, uh, just as suitable, like I guess as Sicarii said, some very big projects that have come out of CPC lately, and, uh, these are kind of smaller dollar ones, I think free cash would be sufficient.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here from the CPC that might speak on this?
I'm, I'm the chair of the CPC. I, I can't speak on behalf of the CPC because there's a thing coming before us. So I can only speak, uh, me as an individual, as could any other CPC members that might be here, but I can't speak for all my board because we didn't discuss.
Um, so, uh, just so my comment, there would be, uh, when we voted this in, I don't remember, right, years ago, these, that was one of the things that made me vote for it, that this, these extra taxes, I was gonna go to that type of service that the town would need. So to take free cash, me personally, I would say, uh, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess my words are the same.
Sorry.
It's our John Benson, two forty-seven, Oakdale Street.
Thank you.
Similar thought. When we use free cash like this instead of CPC funds, which are lull off, that means less money available for all those other things that we're saying we, we need to have things like two and a half overrides for because we need funding. But we have a source of funding, we can wall for these things, and we're choosing not to do it, instead of taking free cash money, and that doesn't even make sense to me.
Could the moderator can respond to that?
Go ahead.
The Capital Investment Board didn't discuss this point. Because of the timing of the October town meeting and when the courts need to be, or could be resurfaced, if it's approved tonight, um, we voted to, we voted to endorse it from free cash this time around. We could, at the end of the meeting, um, ask for it to be reimbursed by the CPC.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I figured you'd actually, it was presented to us that, when, when we got this, it was too late to have a CPC meeting, hopefully the closing of the warrant, uh, to, uh, get that, then endorse that. So, we basically were, in, in deference to maintain the asset, uh, we were told that it would have to be done this year, or otherwise, as Jim mentioned, it would be deteriorated much further and much more expensive for care. So the strategy was, come to town meeting, get approved, to be funded, so at least we can have a contract, go out, get some bids, get it done in the fall, and then back to fall town meetings, hopefully with a CPC vote, one way or another, to reimburse that.
Thank you. Further question or comment?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I, I just want to clarify, if we vote this and the work is done, we can't then go back and say, we want to be reimbursed as a town, we want to reimburse our free cash out of the CPC. The CPC is written, so it's not allowed to reimburse things that you've already done. So we would have to, if we're gonna go the CPC route, we couldn't do this project until six months from now at the earliest. That's the next, the absent speciality, which I'm not advocating for. We couldn't do this until the CPC met and approved it, and the town meeting that approves it in six months.
Thank you. Further question or comment? We're talking about the tennis court resurfacing, part B. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
Aye!
The ayes have it. The ayes have it, it wasn't nearly close, if you want to count off now. It wasn't close. Fine. People count. You're, having been a request for account, we're gonna use the orange cards, we're not getting the tellers out, I hope. Just the orange cards. All in favor of the tennis court resurfacing from free cash, hold your card up. Put them down. Opposed? Motion passes. Part C, basketball court resurfacing. Is there a question or comment from the public?
Is this the same issue where we didn't get to the CPC in time with the tennis courts?
Does anyone know the answer?
I can tell you this was not brought before the CPC.
When we, when we first saw it, it was my conference, CPC, and that one was too late. And so when we, when the finance committee and Capital Investment Board first saw it, it was, uh, we, we were under the understanding that the CPC would not be having to be required to town be to endorse the project.
This is the second time we heard it wasn't in time. And earlier today, I heard how efficient the town was being run, but we're not making it on time.
That, that's not fair. The decision was made to fund this out of free cash. There was no not on time. You can vote to fund this out of free cash, or you can vote to not run, fund it out of free cash. That's what's before us. This, a decision was made to fund this out of this funding source. There, there's no, there's nothing that says because a project could possibly be funded by CPC funds, you have to go to the CPC with that, that's not the way the law is written.
I think we won. You hit the, uh, go ahead, all right.
No, I was just gonna say, and, and the intent is still there, if the season provides to go to the CPC and we can get the work done after, not until we tell you, if it gets approved, but it's just an option.
Thank you. Further question or comment? Hearing none. All in favor of part C basketball resurfacing, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
Aye!
The ayes have it. Article, this, same article, sorry, article ten, part D, two vans for schools. Is there a question or comment from the public on part D? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
Aye!
The ayes have it. Part E, library boiler replacement, question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Part E passes. F, fire and DPW building and feasibility study.
Uh, hi, could someone just explain?
We need your name and address, please.
Mark Trudeau from sixteen Little Lane. Could someone just explain this one, the picture didn't really provide any explanation for me, anyway.
Thank you. Can anyone shut some light?
Being Mark Southie, Fire Chief, University National Director. To speak to what specifically this is, is this is a high professional engineering, that's your firm, to look at our existing buildings and grounds, to see if what is usable for the new facility, uh, if in addition is feasible, if the new buildings, uh, require or recommended for the future of the town.
Thank you.
David Toppin, one sixty West Woodson Street. Um, there's a third of the money you need. And I don't know, we're a town of eight-five-hundred people, we have been since I was moved here in nineteen sixty-seven. I don't know how much bigger a fire station would need or a whatnot, but I don't think the town's in the mood this particular moment in time to spend a lot of additional money. And I think you can see that through the turnout here, when they vote tonight.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, this is not me saying this, this is the Government Finance Officers Association saying this. Using one-time funds like free cash in an operational budget is not sound budgeting. We're spending free cash right now. These are one-time funds, they should be used for one-time things like free cash. It's different types of money, you're not gonna balance the budget with free cash, as we have been to a small extent, but this, this does not solve the override problem. Um, and then to speak to a larger station, I don't know if the fire chief or CPW director just wanna talk about what their current working conditions are in their fire station, or CPW, please.
Mr. Moderator, through you, please. Um, so our current facility is from the nineteen sixties. Uh, I'm sure a lot of you have been through there at different times over the years. It was originally the fire and police department. It got to the point where it wasn't feasible to have both agencies, didn't have building anymore, so police department was built. A lot of people thought we went to the dump, and, uh, that's not the case. A lot of people currently think that the, uh, light department opening is our new facility. Again, not the case, it just happens to be red. So, the, uh, they didn't have big doors. But, uh, the station that we're in now, um, when it was designed and built for the fire department and police department, ambulances were Cadillac versus, they were much smaller than the vehicles you see us in, we pick you up. ambulances were Cadillac versus, they were much smaller than the vehicles you see us in, we pick you up in every day now. And we have two of them, and we really need three, we have no room for. The fire trucks, you remember what the 40s and 50s and 60s fire apparatus looked like? That's what we use in our muster races now. Very small vehicles, they're equivalent in size to electric pickup truck now. You see the fire trucks we drive, they're 33,000 pounds, they're about 27 to 32 feet long, massive vehicles, eight and a half feet wide. They don't feasibly fit within that station. If you look at the door openings, they are all scraped from thousands of entries and exits coming in and out of there. The vehicles themselves are scraped on both sides. Our water service meter has been broken off over and over and over. Not to mention the fact that the building still has asbestos in it, and it's starting to decay and fall every day. It's like snowing inside of there. The building is antiquated, it doesn't meet our needs, and it certainly doesn't afford us any room for growth. The town, though, population isn't growing exponentially, our call volume is. We are doing more and more calls each year. We respond to over 2,000 emergencies in the last couple of years, and that continues to grow. That's a lot of times in and out of those old doors, in and out of that old station. We're trying to retrofit the upstairs again to create enough space for our duty crews. We're still only, you know, the two people that are on duty, that's our staff, two, they're both here right now. Okay, so if that angles goes out, that's it. The place isn't full of firefighters right now. Okay, so it's a pretty desperate situation within the Fire Department. And something, this game has been kicked down the road for years. I have a feasibility study from seven, eight, 10 years ago. This has already been done at one point, was decided it was going to cost over $5 million back then, just to try to bring it up to code, not even to meet the needs of the town. That was just to make the building up to code, and it was decided then, it was going to be too much money, the building wasn't worth investing in. And here we are, all these years later, talking about the same thing. In my opinion, as the head of the Fire Department, it is time for the town to look towards the future for emergency services, and this is the first step in that process.
Thank you. Further comment or question from the public? Thank you over here.
Laura Buchanan, 162 Maple Street. I'd like to make a comment and a question, if possible. My first comment would be, thank you, Fire and DPW for your services to our town. I live on Maple Street, and I see you every day, multiple times a day, and my daughter loves you all. The other thing is, how did you come to this $10,000 number?
Go ahead.
So as you can imagine, there are several other communities that are in the same situation as us, and several of whom have done these projects over the last few years. So these are estimates based upon speaking to these other communities and ballpark estimates of what they pay. Obviously, things change year to year, COVID had a big impact on stuff, but we feel that these are safe numbers to at least get the station's feasibility component of this accomplished, so that we know we're looking against going forward.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Is the previous feasibility study valuable at all? And you said it was done seven, eight years ago, is there anything from that study that can be used to maybe offset some of those costs?
We could certainly turn that over to whatever firm was hired to do the new study. But if anything, the building has deteriorated further, so I would assume they would take that as a starting point and reevaluate some of the other components of it, but there hasn't been any major renovation or corrections made to that building since that was done.
Thank you. Over here.
I'm Robert Ward, I also have a little lot of rights. Mr. Burrow, a question now. These people talk about something along the way to a grand study that will pass, or maybe speak to you about free cash with the town, this is something you should try.
If you could lean up to the microphone.
It's all, so I was asking Mr. Burrow if he could speak to you on free cash the town has on hand, because some people seem to be considering these numbers are high, whereas 200 grand is really what, about 10% of our free cash, if you need that, all right.
Go ahead.
Moderator?
Sure.
The beginning free cash balance, the start of this meeting was $1,632,000 to $624,000. Use of free cash in fiscal year 25 budget will be $300,000. We have some other articles that are about appropriations of free cash, if they are approved. All capital expenditures are approved, the remaining balance after tonight's town meeting will be $567,768.
Thank you. Over here.
Nicole Evans, 785 Wall Street. I have kind of a comment and a question. First, we are lucky to live in West Boston, I think. We have a really nice town with a lot of wonderful people, and I certainly understand why so many people are concerned about spending. But we've also been very, I think, fiscally conservative, especially compared to a lot of other surrounding areas, and now we're talking about safety. And I know all of us at one point or another are going to need a call for the Fire Department, or an ambulance, or are not going to want our kids to trip on the tennis court, or whatever it may be. So hoping, you know, to ask everyone who's in mind that we're not just trying to level off what we have, but maintain a safe and comfortable environment so that people want to continue to come to West Boston and contribute to the town, which, for the Fire Chief, that leads into the question, if this is not to pass, what do you see in the future in terms of needing support in the department for this same, you know, I'm really looking, I guess, how much increases, if we don't do it now, what are we looking at later?
G, can you speak to that?
Sure, I mean, the best I can estimate is the way the trends have gone over the last several years. I can tell you right now, every bay in our station is full, every space, every corner, every no-thing-tranny. You see how much equipment we have stored outside in the parking lot. So we are out of space currently. As things go forward, that situation is likely to get worse and worse. I don't foresee the vehicles getting any smaller, and I don't foresee the town's fire service getting any smaller. And in fact, our call department is dwindling by the year. For those of you that live in town, you know our last few call firefighters, and they're going to be aging out of the system by state law in the next few years. The only services we're going to have available at that point are going to be the staff that's on duty. So we're going to need more space to physically house people.
Thanks. DPW, you had a chance to respond to any of us.
Thank you, moderator. My name is Tom Denny, DPW Director. I'm just going to piggyback on what the chief said rightly. We'll just add another 50 years to the DPW. Besides all the age of the asbestos and the old ways not fitting the trucks, the trucks falling apart, the building is just a wreck. And I implore anybody that wants to come down and take a look at what it is, I have a million pictures that I give you to pick on, everybody. You've got to really see this place. I mean, the bricks have cracks in it everywhere. The urinals are probably about 40, 50 years old. This place is actually history. If you like to teach up, you can actually come to the DPW, and I'll show you around. But definitely, and trucks are next. So during the storms this winter, the DPW guys carried the office, they were fantastic. It was unbelievable. My first storm here in December, we basically lost just about 75% of the fleet. One truck down, 2015, if you don't know, we got that. 2006, gone, engines gone, back rear ends gone, catch faces truck gone. But all the men and the people in DPW, they were fantastic. They just came up to the challenge, they worked for 40, 50 hours, they had to keep going, and they got the job done. And it's in piss poor condition, the building they're working out, stick to the lump. Just to let everybody know.
Thank you.
And like I said, offer.
Hey, my name is Sarah Dashblow, 139 Building.
Can you get up to the microphone, please?
Yes, Sarah Dashblow, 139 Building. So the question of the timing of the free cash meeting. So for example, the library book, I'm sure they overlooked, they're just trying to extend that, is that why I say end of fiscal year this year? Or when is that? If we vote yes, I'm thinking it's that.
I'm going to ask you to confine your question to part F that's before us right now. So.
For any of these cash flows, are they within this fiscal year, including what that's being talked about right now?
Anyone know the answer to that?
The answer is no.
And would be, is it then nets this year?
So there's not a time limit on these, per se. I would say that for this article in particular, we have the Facilities Implementation and Strategic Planning Committee, AKA FIS, who are involved in any time they're doing a building project. So FIS has not met in a number of years, I believe, for on any project, probably since, Ray, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but probably since the senior sent a project. Okay, and so FIS will first be convening to talk about when we go out to solicit different vendors for this study, what do we want included in this study, meeting with both the DPW Director and the Fire Chief. So there's going to be a process through a committee before we even go out to hire folks for this study. Your study is expected, once we go out, it's probably going to take well over a year to get the results in. And they'll be looking at a number of things, including rehabilitation of the buildings, whether we keep them both on the same site, if there's available land. That's, we're paying professionals to look at all these things, and they'll also be giving us some price estimates for what the costs would be either of repair or replacement. That's all well down the road, this is just to start the process to get that study coming.
Sure, and the main reason is there are items on there that are embedded outside the surface that we've heard earlier that could possibly affect it, that they closed off one of those surfaces, based on the two maps that we both own, but then we're funding it. So people look at, sort of, arriving from the bottom. That's the surface that we talked about, actually, I closed the life of two maps, and then we're going to grow to 3,000,000 dollars, the building should be mine if it's closed. So it seems like going anyway, actually, just a kind of thing.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor on part F, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Part G, Town Air Handlers, question or comment from the public? Hearing none. Oh, go ahead. You got to get closer to the mic, all right?
Ray McCollum, 175 West South Street. I was among the sending to vote on this, but I'm a particular article. We have a standard protocol to be executed without the town departments. Anyone that's looking to buy any durable assets.
Stop looking at them, just talk to the mic.
Any department with capital, there's a typical process we go through, and we ask for quotes, we ask for backup, we ask for what about making these programs. That is not for all of the various durable ones that are being purchased here, with the exception of this article. We have a educated estimate from a town employee. We don't have a quote that we can query, we don't have an estimate of what projected maintenance costs would be. I have no reason to think that this isn't something that the town needs. It's hard to professional facilities manager to tell us what we intend to do. But I don't feel that we have a full grasp on what the actual costs would be, and the same expectation that exists on any town department. So I would suggest that we push this off to fall town meeting with a safety true concept of being good.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor of part G, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I think the nays have it, but I think it's a little too close for me to feel awesome about it. So let's use our orange cards. I can't, I can't look if you're talking. Please, thank you. Part G, to vote yea on the Town Air Handlers for 50,000, please hold up your orange card. To vote nay on this, now hold up your orange card. I think that I still have, okay. Part G fails. Now, can I do Article 11? This is moderator, can I do Article 11? Article 11, borrowing authorization to purchase a DPW dump truck.
I vote, I will make the motion, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $231,231,710 dollars to purchase a dump truck for the use of the Department of Public Works, including all costs associated and related to the sale. And meets this appropriation, the curator with the approval of the board's statement is honored tomorrow, set around unders. Pursuant, under and pursuant to General, General, Chapter 44, Section 7, Article 1, and/or any other legal authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town, of the town they are.
Is there something?
Second.
Just a moment. Shh. Please. Is there any explanation or presentation on this article?
No. Article 1112, what we used upon purchase of two dump trucks with DPW, the town has historically utilized short-term borrowing inside the limits of property and app, AKA inside borrowing, to fund certain capital purchases. The last borrowing was in 2019 for a fire truck, $530,000 borrowing, which has now been paid off. The article plugs the inside borrowing at a similar amount to ensure level debt service. One vehicle purchase will replace a 2005 International 7400 Dump Truck, which has reached end of life and, reached end of useful life. The second will replace a 2016 International Dump Truck, which experienced a catastrophic engine failure this past winter. Replaced trucks have two different cons because parts from the 2016 vehicle will be stripped and used on one of the new vehicles. They have a lowering overall cost of one year.
Thank you. Dump boards and committees, any comment or recommendation?
Someone for endorsement, sir.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee and Capital Investment Board endorsed this article.
Thank you. Any others? Question or comment from the public?
Senior, I just want to show you an industry. There's $865,470 in capital investment, I'm hiring any of that for a dump truck.
Anyone from the town, no answer to that?
So several-fold reason why we're not using a capital investment fund. First is that we are trying to maintain a level of debt service, it keeps a taxation level in that regard. The second, it's because you always want inside, this inside borrowing amount available. If we don't have free cash some year, when this debt is paid off, we do have the ability to have another inside borrowing when this debt is paid off. Secondly, it will drastically deplete the capital investment fund, and we know we have a couple of things of significance, many things, not a couple of things, that are coming. I think the correctness, we're on Capital Investment Board, has been looking for something around approximately the $500,000 mark to plug in this year for that inside borrowing, and these two trucks just happened to meet that film.
Thank you. Over here.
Jessica Olson, Bondi Drive. So is there a reason that we're unable to repair the 2016? I understand it's catastrophic, but even if that $230,000 is a lot more than what I would anticipate for, like, an engine replacement?
Is anyone from the town have a answer? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, moderator. Um, the engine itself. Sorry. Um, the engine itself saved seventy-seven thousand dollars plus other damage in the vehicle, rear ends and stuff like that. It, it, we couldn't go anywhere.
With the twenty sixteen?
I'm sorry, we had, we had the day. Uh, we had, we had the, uh, engine damage and other damages in that vehicle.
How did these damages occur?
Uh, it was actually that one storm. Just took that truck right out. Moved right out. I'm sorry.
There's not any kind of insurance that would help repair those types of issues?
Is anyone from the town know that?
So insurance would cover if the vehicle wasn't an accident. Um, it's, my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this vehicle has had quite a lot of issues since the original purchase, this particular vehicle.
Yes.
And perhaps you could speak to that as well as, uh, and what you were told by the repair shop?
Uh, for some reason, that, that year was a bad year for International. We found out from other municipalities that they all had the same problem with this vehicle. Multiple problems, and we got stuck with the lending. And we couldn't save it. While the majority of the other trucks that we had during the storm, we did everything we could to save it, we bargained them. That's why, um, kind of rolled down my budget. I mean, I'm repairing everything over the sun. And that one kind of took us five, five, five of the year. Everything else is like two thousand five, two thousand six. We're running nineteen-year-old vehicles, twenty-year-old vehicles. We're plowing with pickups. It's, uh, it's pretty crazy. The guys did a great job.
It did, our DPW is, is one of the best, um, if I may.
Is it something new?
It is.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm wondering about the impact the town hit this fails, if these fail. What, what type of impacts are we gonna see, especially with climate change? We aren't really getting snow very much anymore?
That's enough.
To answer that.
Answer the, the idea that we might not be getting as much snow.
It doesn't matter. We still get ice. And a lot of our callouts were ice in the hills. And we had people going out all the time. We were called out for that. And the snow will come anytime. Rainy weeks. Doesn't matter about climate change.
All right, next over here.
Hi, Matt, in forty-eight York Town Road. Um, DPW Director, I was wondering if you could speak to what parts were gonna be reused from those vehicles? Um, I know in the automotive industry, it's common to reach out to vehicles. Um, the dump body's gonna be getting reused, and the plow frame's gonna be getting reused. What can you reuse to save the town as much money as possible?
I have to address the moderator.
Go ahead.
Basically, everything we can to save the town money. We've already done it on a bunch of other vehicles. Um, as much as possible, plow frames, plows, wings, stainless steel parts. I mean, we'll take off basically anything. Differentials, tires, whatever we can use. And then at some point, we'll put it in an initiative bid and bid it out.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? All right, this article does require a two-thirds majority. Your moderator appreciates unanimity, but you're not the help. Though you're conscious. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? All right. That's, that's more than two-thirds. Thank you. Motion carries. Article twelve. Borrowing authorization to purchase a dump truck, yes, what's your emotion?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred eight thousand fifty dollars to purchase a dump truck for the use of Department of Public Works, including all cost incidents, incidental and related to that. And to meet appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, is authorized to borrow a set amount under the pursuant of GLC forty-four seven one, or any other enabling authority until issued bonds or loans of the town therefore.
Is there a second? Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
It's the same explanation like Article eleven.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're saying it's the same thing. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, misunderstood. Appreciate you, uh, appreciate that. Uh, town boards and committees, any comment or recommendation?
Uh, select Board endorse this article.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee and the Capital Investment Board endorse this article.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in, oh, this is another two-thirds, just so you know. All in favor of Article twelve, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Nay, more than two-thirds again. Motion carries, article's passed. Uh, Article thirteen, a vote to establish and amend departmental revolving funds. Is there a motion?
Pursuant to the document, I move the town vote to amend Article thirteen of the general bylaw by adding the text in bold italicized establishing a new technology fee revolving fund as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second? Thank you.
It's Article forty.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that was my, who was it, Robert?
Go ahead. I will take this as your, I will take this as you amended your own motion, go ahead.
I move the town vote to amend Article forty of the general bylaw by adding the text in bold italicized establishing a new technology fund to a new technology revolving fund as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. Any explanation on this?
Yes, this article's to establish a technology fee revolving fund. This will allow the fees charged for utilizing the new key permitting software to be used to pay for the software cost itself.
Thank you. Uh, town boards and committees, a comment or recommendation?
The Select Board endorsed this article.
Thank you.
Finance Committee endorse this article?
Thank you. Any others?
I want to endorse this article.
That's okay. Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Any question or comment from the public? No? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Motion carries. Articles passed. Article fourteen, departmental revolving funds, is there a motion?
Yes, I move the town vote to approve Article fourteen as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or taking any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Thank you. Is there an explanation on this?
Yes, this article sets the annual spending limits of each town's revolving funds.
Okay. Town boards and committees, comments or recommendations?
Uh, Finance Committee voted to endorse this article.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Motion carries, articles passed. Article sixteen. This is why I like a single sided. Okay, I don't mess it up. That's my excuse tonight, anyway. Article fifteen. Let me clear, it's fifteen. Authorization to appropriate funds to the OPEB Trust Fund. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from certified free cash to the Elder Post Employment Benefit Trust Fund.
Is there a second? Just a few seconds, thank you. Explanation or presentation?
Uh, the OPEB fund is an unfunded liability. Every town in the Commonwealth and from where the country has it, uh, we are now required to show it on our balance sheet. And our bonding agencies wanna see a steady input of funds into the OPEB. Uh, mainly health insurance for retirees is the biggest driver of, uh, driving cost of this. Uh, so we have been putting in, uh, funds each town, each fall town meeting, uh, for a huge spring town meeting, um, for the past several years. And this is just the yearly, uh, funding of this line.
Thank you. Uh, town boards and committees, comments or recommendations?
Finance Committee voted to endorse this article.
Thank you, Finance. Select Board? Thank you. Others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Motion carries, Article fifteen is passed. After fifteen is sixteen.
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of twenty thousand dollars from certified free cash to municipal building fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, explanation or presentation?
Well, you just mentioned right down the paper. The municipal building fund was established in two thousand nine to create an account for the maintenance, repair, or capital improvement on any municipal building. Unextended funds appropriated for the maintenance and repair of non-school buildings are transferred to this account at the close of each fiscal year. By a two-thirds vote of the town can also appropriately directly into this account. Expenditures from this account can be made without further appropriation. The current account balance is eighty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars twenty-six cents as of May.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, a comment or recommendation?
Uh, Finance Committee voted to endorse this article.
Thank you. Others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? The ayes have it, that was a two-thirds majority. I didn't mention that, but the person whom we explained it did. Thank you. Article seventeen.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article seventeen as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I note that this is titled Authorization to Appropriate Funds to the OPII Settlement Fund. Is there an explanation or a presentation on this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. All the OPI settlement funds received in the period years are given to the town for its specifically earmarked purpose related to the OPI treatment and recovery programs. However, the general laws have no provisions for the special revenue fund to prevent such funds from needing to go through the free cash certification process. In December, in December twenty twenty-three, this new settlement fund was created by an act of the legislature. And the funds that were previously by the town and retained in free cash now need to be transferred into a new OPI settlement fund.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendation or comment?
Finance Committee endorse this article?
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article seventeen is passed. Article eighteen, five-year municipal solid waste collection slash disposal contract. Is there a motion? You gotta keep the mic. Thank you.
I move the town vote to approve Article eighteen as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, some kind of explanation or presentation on this?
So, uh, solid waste contracts are exempt from municipal procurement laws. However, state law requires town needing to approve contracts for terms over three years. The town solid waste contract expires June thirty of twenty twenty-one. No decision has been made at this time whether to continue with the current vendor or move on to bid. However, allowing for five-year solid waste contracts will better position the town in the case of the decision that may not be allowed to bid.
Thank you. Uh, town boards and committees, is there any comment or recommendation on this?
The Select Board endorse this article.
Thank you.
Finance Committee endorse this article.
Thank you.
The Squad Committee endorse this article.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Uh, a question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
The ayes have it.
Article eighteen is passed. Article nineteen, acceptance of Master and Law's Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-four B, prudent investor rule. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article nineteen as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation on this?
Right now, without adopting this, uh, article, our money is sitting in interest-bearing accounts, not the high-yield five percent interest-bearing accounts, the Bank of America point zero zero one interest-bearing accounts. Uh, this allows the treasurer to invest the funds, and it says, as a prudent investor would, talking high yield, not high yield, uh, treasury bonds, um, other bond, bonds for blue chip-type companies. Not, no risky investment, but it will allow us to earn some money on the funds that are sitting in the bank, which hopefully will alleviate a little bit of our problems.
Thank you. Uh, town boards and committees, recommendations or comments?
Select Board endorse this article.
Thank you.
Finance Committee voted to endorse this article.
Thank you, any others? Hearing none. Questions or comments from the public?
Jessica Olson, Bondi View. So this has potential to expose us to loss, is that correct?
And someone from the town answered. Perhaps Vincenzo? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, moderator, I'm just trying to say to this better factor. Um, my job is to make sure that all our money is, um, earning, you know, interest in our money. And part of it is when you invest, there could be some loss, but we are, are very, we're not dangerous in any way specifically what investing is. But it will, in the end, we make more money than leaving it in the bank with two percent interest. And it's only our trust funds. It can't be, like, general fund money or anything. It's only our trust funds that we do it with.
Okay, and then, um, what are the guides for prudent investment? And then what oversight and fees will come with approval?
If you know.
We use a firm, our colleague in the trust company, and it's, I mean, they do have a, this is why they do have a fee structure. I don't have that in front of me, but we do have to pay them for their, uh, management of the trust funds. Uh, but it is professionally managed. Uh, this is not, uh, the attorney collector sitting in our office and looking what the daily NASDAQ is and moving money around. Uh, these funds are professionally invested with, um, Bartholomew, who, uh, has the funds of many, many municipalities across the globe. It just allows more flexibility in where exactly those funds can be invested.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Or the question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article nineteen is passed. Article twenty, acceptance of Master and Law's Chapter thirty-two, Section four, two B. Is there a motion?
Pursuant to the motion, I move the town vote to approve Article twenty as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other other action thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. Explanation or presentation?
Adoption of this local option would enable on-call firefighters and part-time police officers who labor or hired full-time the ability to buy back a portion of their time over and above the current five-year maximum. The time can be bought back as a day per day.
Thank you. Comment or recommendation from town boards or committees?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article twenty is passed. Article twenty-one, authorization to appropriate funds from community preservation fund revenues. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Third second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
This is a required annual appropriation of the CTC revenues into the three, ten percent, three required reserves with the balance going into budget reserve and admin expense line interest.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any comment request, sorry, comment or recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article twenty-one is passed. Article twenty-two, authorization to amend the personnel bylaw of the general bylaws. Is there a motion?
Vanessa Kuznowski, six million circle, personnel work. I move the town to vote to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Third second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
This article eliminates positions on the classification plan and the town, that the town no longer fills, generalizes the titles of certain positions, changes the titles of certain positions, and also places titles of certain positions on the plan that may be filled in the future. This article also clarifies which positions are exempt and which are non-exempt and which positions may be compensated outside of the plan.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendation or comment?
Andrew Healan, Los Angeles Central Street, bylaw committee voted to endorse.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article twenty-two is passed. Article twenty-three, authorization to amend the personnel bylaw of the general bylaws.
Vanessa Kuznowski, six million circle, personnel work. I move the town to vote to approve Article twenty-three as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Third second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation, please?
The article changes the classification of certain employees from seasonal to temporary or intermittent. This article also codifies which positions are temporary or intermittent.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, recommendations or comments?
Bylaw committee voted to endorse.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article twenty-three is passed. Article twenty-four, authorization to amend the general bylaws. Is there a motion?
Pursuant to the motion, I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-four as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any action relative thereto.
Third second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. Explanation?
The warrant has an explanation minute. There is also a handout that you have in your packet titled West Boylton Stormwater Regulations.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, recommendations or comments?
Vincent Gialli of the planning board. Planning board does not have a comment on this. We need to have a recommendation.
Thank you. What about bylaws?
Bylaw company, ten thousand, it's up.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Questions and comments from the public?
Mark Trudeau, sixteen, underling. I noticed, I have a question about Article twenty-four. The old language describing the term redevelopment excludes residential. It says that it's redevelopment of properties that are used for commercial industrial purposes. And new definition for redevelopment doesn't have that exclusion. So it sounds like these regulations now apply to residential properties too. I was wondering if that's intentional, is there any way to avoid that and make this change to match up with state law?
And the town having this.
Mr. Moderator, the town has been working with a consultant on this in the next bylaw. Jerry Schwartz from Westminster, yes, in this year, through the moderator, if you wouldn't mind if she addressed these technical questions of the bylaw?
That's fine. Please do.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me tonight. As far as that requirement, so based on the MS four permit, there is a threshold of the amount of disturbance that the permit regulates, and the threshold is set at an acre of more disturbance. So when the town set up their bylaws previously, that threshold was set at twenty thousand square feet. So if there is twenty thousand square feet of disturbance or more, we would want to, I guess, capture that at this point, kind of go forward, but behind a case-by-case basis, of course.
I think you might want to ask a follow-up question. So is there a specific reason why residential properties are no longer going to be excluded from that language?
So we just want to fully make sure we're fully being kind of the permit requirements at this point. But again, again, it's kind of a case-by-case basis as this goes before kind of individual boards at this point.
Thank you.
Vincent Gialli, fifty-first street, not speaking as the planning board, but the planning board is noting this article as being plausible to write for an act bylaws. There's been no comment or question. I don't know that the planning board ever discussed that. And I'm wondering why the planning board was assigning that to me since this is something that comes from the DPDW.
Okay, go ahead.
So this article made its way through a number of boards, committees, and commissions. I think there was a listening board that went on here with this and the next article. There was concern, so as it's defined in the bylaw, the stormwater authority is defined as the DPW director. The original language of this article had the stormwater authority after public hearing enacting regulations. What would that mean in reality? That would mean that the DPW director alone would have a public hearing, would, that is not subject to the open meeting law because the stormwater authority is one person. And there's language that references they would have a vote, a majority vote of one. So essentially, there was concern that the DPW director, not Tom, but any person in that position, that the DPW director would not only be able to unilaterally draft regulation, not subject to open meeting law, any, by themselves, in a room, voting by themselves, essentially. That then he would also go out and enforce said bylaw. So to appease that concern, the modification was made relatively recently, that this be given to, this duly given to the planning board, so that there was more of a public vetting process. In terms of why the planning board didn't put this on the agenda to consider that change, that did have to drive to your chair.
Was it ever since the planning board, so?
I can say that your chair was well aware of the changes, and if they decided to put that on an agenda of the planning board, that would be the duty of the chair.
And the last, so the last meeting we talked about this act was, I think, a year, over a year ago, and the discussion, actually, we brought up this issue. We said it needs to be established, and then we never heard anything else back. The MS four requirements are that any alteration of or an acre needs to get this permit, but the town has decided to do it for ten thousand square feet, not twenty thousand. I'm pretty sure it says ten thousand square feet. And that number does include work on residential lots. There are exemptions that are listed in there, but all the exemptions say if it's under ten thousand square feet. So the requirement is to do it whenever it's over ten thousand square feet. Then it provides exemptions that say you're exempt if it's a residence, if it's this or that. If it's under ten thousand square, ten thousand square feet, so I don't know what the exemption really is saying. So there are a bunch of things in here when I was reading that did not appear appropriate, and I just would recommend voting against this.
Thank you.
Jessica Wilson, body view drag. Couple of questions. How much of an issue is this? And then what are the fees and costs to pursue this versus follow-up for non-compliance or fines from somewhere?
Go ahead.
I guess I just do want to understand the concerns here tonight, but I do want to emphasize the importance of kind of moving forward with this bylaw in some capacity, getting this modified. Obviously, the next step is adopting accompanying rules or regulations. So for non-compliance, EPA could fine the town up to fifty thousand dollars per day for non-compliance. And this is something that's on EPA's radar. I had a meeting last week with a client and EPA actually had this very issue. Because the adoption of the requirements under the permit came before, were required back in about three years ago now. So this is, we're like three years kind of behind where we should be in terms of the adoption at this point, so.
And as it stands currently, if we vote on this, is this how things are going to come to be? I know the planning board that concerns.
No.
No?
No, that did not. So it was not.
He wasn't doing this with any, okay, okay. So then the person who spoke prior to me, his concerns seem valid. They seem to be interesting points. So what, what options do we have? Like, is this just either yes or no, and has to be asked as is now? Or is there going to be an option for us to modify it in the future?
Mr. Freed, do you have information response to this thing, or?
Yes, I do. I would like to confess, I think this is my fault. I was sort of piggybacking on the fact that we're doing the MS four, and I saw a lack of protection for people, residents with small lots and developers going on the neighborhood law or wherever. They were not protected from their development creating stormwater onto their property. They were in fact exempted. But that person would be exempted out of this. And the person who was being storm ordered into their basement or whatever was in the habit, had no recourse. So I talked a lot about this during meetings over the time. I got feedback that was good or bad. And it made them, I'm kind of happy with that because it protects the people here, not just the commercial people. So I would endorse it for that reason, and for the state and federal requirements also required.
Feel like you got an answer?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next over here?
I see.
Yep, just sure I see. Yep, you did.
Kevin Claire, ninety-five, fifth street. I'm also on the planning board. I still have concerns as well. I don't think I just read enough to understand it to maybe bother both.
Thank you. Can you give it a little turn? Thank you.
Just one more comment to share.
In the address, in the address, please.
Mark Trudeau at sixteen, underling.
Thank you.
So I am concerned about shrinking the size of parcel that's subject to this regulation from the state regulation of an acre to a quarter acre. And the fact that the regulation gives the town rights to impose assuredly bonds required to, that say if you're replacing, let me ask the question. If I'm replacing my lawn, which is fifteen thousand square feet, when do you put up assuredly bonds to replace my lawn? If so, I would recommend voting no on this and getting a rewrite that protects us in a more clear way.
Go ahead, Mr. Freed.
In regions of, you can apply a waiver, and there's some place saying I can't find it looking up now. It allows the stormwater authority to waive strict compliance if you're doing a good job on your farm with the best practices, I think that are in, that are going to be, um, kind of.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I believe section five, uh, exemptions, additions of existing landscaping, garden, parks.
Please speak until that.
Resemptions, number, uh, three, maintenance of existing landscape environments or lawn areas associated with a single, two or three family of the world.
I can understand your kind of concerns. I mean, I think some of this is a little bit open to interpretation, you know, the planning board moves forward. But I mean, as far as the ten thousand square foot threshold, I mean, that's nothing that changed. That was in the stormwater bylaw before we came before you tonight. We didn't make any changes to that threshold. But something that you've been finding money with up to this age.
Thank you. Over here?
David Toppin, Los Angeles Street. I didn't really look into this, and I don't know much about it, but I listened to what the two gentlemen said on the planning board, and I think we should probably pay attention to what they're saying and vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
Will this in any way impact my ability to collect stormwater, rainwater?
I didn't want to answer that one. I wanted to.
Sorry, could you ask a question? Mr. Freed would like to answer. So your question is, will this stormwater bylaw amendment do anything to change your ability to collect rainwater? Does anyone know the answer to that?
No, I mean, obviously, you're talking about like, how are you collecting? What is this term right now, or?
Yeah, I'm trying to, so I'm just wanting to make sure I know that's something that's happening in a lot of places.
No, that's fine. Well, yeah, requesting, using stormwater on your property, obviously, that's highly encouraged. So no, that doesn't change anything like that.
Thank you. Or the question or comment from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Is there was multiple concerns about the ten thousand square feet? So I just want to address that. That hasn't changed. So the three votes I've heard about the concerns on that, it's currently ten thousand feet. This doesn't change that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We're seeing the study eighteen, right? If we vote against it this time, does that mean that you will go back and talk to the planning board more and rewrite it for more clarity?
I guess you can answer this, but.
Yeah, I guess at this point, obviously, this is something we've been working on for a few years now. We've gone before the select board a few times, before the planning board, conservation commission. I mean, I guess, I guess at this point, if it didn't pass tonight, then we'd have to go back, relook at the bylaw, make updates, and then put it forth for town meeting adoption again. I mean, it doesn't mean that this, you know, if you were to adopt this bylaw tonight, it doesn't mean that, or as it to be, these modifications, it doesn't mean that you could, of course, amend it in the future. amend it in the future. I guess the concern is just wanting to make sure it meets the bare minimum requirements of the MS4 permit. I guess, and again, just what I'm hearing in the last few weeks, and based on the meeting that I had with EPA last week, I mean, they are, they are reaching out to each community and for communities that are not currently compliant, you know, they're issuing administrative orders at this point, so we're kind of under the radar of EPA. And, you know, we've been working really hard the last several years to get the town into compliance, so, I mean, this is just one element of the permit. There's a number of elements of the permit that the town was kind of not compliant with, and so it's been a, just a big lift to kind of get where we are, and we're in a much better place now. So I guess, you know, just based on the meeting that I had last week, I need to see this not move through at this time, but I understand your concerns too, at the same time, just to, like I said, based on my part on the EPA, so.
That sounds like the answer. Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
I just want to kind of follow up a second part of that, that response is, yes, Ms. Schwartz can come back and continue to revise, but as much as she loves the town of West Wilson, she's not doing this for free, so with, this would be, we'd have to do either end the contract or use up, we have a contract for multiple MS4 compliance, we have other things, like she said, though it's taking her resources that we're already expending funds on and putting them back into a pot again. I mean, frankly, I'm a little surprised to hear that this has been rewards and that this will disrupt the order of EPA.
Thank you. You have follow-up? Sorry, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, sorry, and I found what I was looking for. It's under waivers, and it says the stormwater authority, or just, or just doesn't need to make wage strict compliance with the requirements of the bylaw, the rules, regulations, promulgated and other, any application, written request, granted, such a waiver, such a request shall be accommodated by an explanation or documentation, but I mean, there is a mechanism in there that you can use to not have to do anything that's traffic in. You just have to do the right things, you know, for your neighbor. I would like to, everybody else sitting there on the planning board, also on the planning board, so give that credit, if that helps anything. The, I would, and say that we should let this go on, because it's a general bylaw, and really the planning board would handle all the zoning powers, which they did, and then we'll do this guy who's on this, under the planning board, but I think, I wouldn't hardly pass it.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Yes, March 16 Main Lane, last, last point, I just wanted to clarify, because several people from the panel have said that the 10,000 square feet has always been in the language in, in the bylaw, but I want to make sure that I'm correct, that the exclusion of residential from that 10,000 square foot rule is, has been updated into the new language. Am I correct, or am I missing anything in the definition of redevelopment?
Someone have an answer for that?
That's my community.
Thank you.
204 Lennox Street, West Wilson's really in a hard watership, so when you're drafting these amendments, is any consideration given to the heavy DCR presence every time?
Yeah, I guess what I was just going to say too, I mean, the foundation of these regulations is all about water quality, right? So this, this is permit, it's driven by water quality, and so if I'm improving water quality and looking at impacts of construction, close construction, stormwater management, that's water quality. So are you concerned about the water quality and the, as far as what you're saying, Joseph?
I'm wondering, is there a consideration given that we've got a heavy presence with the Department of Recreation and Recreation, because we're directly in the watership, so maybe, you know, is enough, is the same consideration given to a town like West Wilson that's in the watership compared to a town that's out of the watership that doesn't have a heavy DCR presence? The DCRs, they're really on the present in this town, and not much you're going to miss, so I'm just wondering if that's considered when they're amending these bylaws?
Yeah, I, so this, this permit, about 250 communities in Massachusetts are subjected to the requirements of the permit, and it's all based on urbanized area, so it does give development. I mean, DCR actually subject themselves separately to the permit requirements for their property as well, so there's really no, I guess, fair and direct in that in terms of.
Would you agree that we may have a heavier presence in West Wilson than in other communities, not directly in the watership?
Um, heavier presence?
Well, we've got headquarters, number one.
Yeah.
Number two, there's, anywhere you look, there's a way DCR trucks all around.
Yeah.
So you might not find that in other communities where some of these bylaws may be more crucial because they don't have that additional oversight like we.
Yeah, I don't think that's, again, that's not what, I guess, is affecting by EPA in terms of, you know, enforcement and move forward with what communities are required to comply with the permit, so it's all about density development, urbanized area.
So we just have to be lucky we're really in a right.
Thank you. That's an observation, another question?
Before you go, so, so my understanding is this is a federal amendment, am I correct? We have really no choice to go forward with this, and my understanding, we're also paying at some level, we're not paying grant money to do this, or, and so, I guess, there's subject penalties for not, for not complying, which is, makes sense that you go back and revise the planning board and have a full set, but I think we really have to do something to.
Thank you.
29 Starlet Street, Mr. Moderator, just a comment. I've worked in rural energy for over 15 years, I have built solar, wind, and hydro assets in 35 states, hundreds of communities around this country, and have reviewed the amendments and bylaws. This is fair, this is well-written, it's well-pawed out. I would be personally very happy to be working under slip restrictions on these bylaws, and I can say that I most.
Thank you, thanks very much. Other question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have. Article 24 passes. Article 25, authorization to amend the general bylaws, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 25 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words for taking any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation or presentation?
Same explanation as the last article, this is also under the MS4 permit, and it's a bylaw that discharges the drainage system. Any questions at the end by the same people that answered the last question?
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendation or comments?
Bylaw committee voted in the first.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Article 25 is passed. Article 26, authorization to amend the general bylaws, is there a motion?
Yes, I make a, I'm, I am, I make a motion, I move the town vote to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words for taking any other action involved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
This article updates the public here and knowns on a law for clarity and authorization.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendation or comment?
Select Board endorsed.
Select Board endorsed, thank you. Bylaws can we amend on this one?
Yes, bylaws, many, there's several.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Questions or comments from the public? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 26 passes. Article 27, the one you've been waiting. Authorization to amend the general bylaws, is there a motion?
I move the town vote to approve Article 27 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words six on section 3A, replacing them with the words 10, adding the words, the fee for which shall be nominal to the word license in section 3A, deleting the words 25 from section 3C, replacing them with the words 10, deleting the word dirt in section 3F, deleting the words third events $200, $200, four, and further events $300, and replacing them with the words further events $150, and by deleting the words, what take any other action involved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Freeman, seconds. Explanation, presentation on this?
Purpose of this bylaw is to establish standards for keeping chickens from residential lots, to prevent nuisance associated with keeping poultry, and to ensure the proper welfare of poultry.
Town boards and committees, any recommendation or comment?
Bylaw committee voted ought not to pass on the original version, but we have another chance to review this version since it was amended and tampered with recommendation. As I understand it, neither does the other board.
So that is incorrect? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the select board voted to endorse.
But not yet, cultural permission of the board.
Thank you for correcting. We now understand. Other boards or committees?
Melinda Harper, 9 Maplewood Avenue, Secretary of the Agricultural Commission. I'd like to read the Agricultural Commission's official statement. The functions of the West Wilson Agricultural Commission include mediating issues related to the keeping of farm animals, addressing other agricultural matters, and supporting and advocating for agriculture in our town. We are equal to make recommendations to the West Wilson Board of Health and Animal Control. We were not consulted in the drafting of these bylaws. We disagree with the need to create these bylaws regarding the keeping of poultry and other farm animals. Complaints related to chickens have been historically infrequent. Agricultural Commission has been informed of only 10 since 2016. Those that were reported were handled on an individual basis. It would not be possible for any bylaws to cover all possible scenarios relating to keeping of poultry or other animals. Such bylaws would not prevent future conflicts. The proposed bylaws specifically target properties under two acres in size and reference zoning regulations for setbacks. Proving compliance with these laws would be overly burdensome to residents who wish to eat poultry. We believe people on all size properties in West Wilson have the right to eat chickens and other farm animals for food and companionship. We also agree that animal welfare must be maintained. We further acknowledge that residents of the buying properties have the right to enjoy their property without excessive smell or noise. Issues related to animals kept in inhumane conditions as well as nuisance complaints related to noise or animal waste are all ready enforceable. For these reasons, the Agricultural Commission unanimously does not support these bylaws.
Other town boards or committees? Hearing none. I'm sorry, town board or committee?
I just want to respond.
Oh, I'm looking for recommendations or comment from town boards and committees. That's what I'm looking for right now. Are you seeking for a downboard or a committee? Then hang on to it. Town boards and committees? Hearing none. Let's hear from the public. Hear it first.
I'm going to that.
You were the agricultural board. Perhaps you could maybe step over by the stairs or something so that folks can get to the microphone and not feel like they have to wait in line behind you. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Could I ask a question?
I've recognized this town resident, so I will, I will get to, the folks who have microphones already soon, but we're going to let the public say a thing or two, and then we'll come out to the folks who are on stage. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Deborah Gann, 14 Woodman Drive, and I have eight chickens, and they are my cats. They're used for plunder and for their eggs. I don't sell them, I don't sell the eggs, they're just my cats. So I'm wondering about the bylaw, if it limited to six, and I have eight, if this went through, they would be rare positive.
For clarity, I believe it was moved as ten, not as, not as six, just for clarity. Thank you very much.
Can you adjust that?
Thank you. Right here.
This is the first time I had to adjust mine. Paul and Joey, 10th Street. So I know, as I walk coming to town for a farm community, I was just wondering, under whose purview or board that kind of falls under, and against that.
Okay. Probably a complicated question, does anyone from the town have a simple answer?
Is it the Ag Ward, is it the Select Board, is it any of the above?
And, can I address this?
Please do.
Amy Mounds, 1635 St., also some member of the Agricultural Commission. Really joint effort, these things are joint effort. So the Agricultural Commission exists to make recommendations, you know, diffuse situations, step in whenever necessary, we all have an area that's a piece, when it goes to farming, and so that's what we do, meaning also, it's quite closely with the board of health for certain issues when it comes up, which we've talked about in the past. We have worked with the Board of Health on that, it never came to fruition, but we did work with that. Also, it's one of the select boards involved as well. So it's really a multi-boarded commission, you know, partnership to get these.
Mr. Morrison?
The specific interest to that is the record of farm, this actually deals with commercial farming. The state law deals with parcels that are five acres or more, down to two acres or more, hence the two acre number here, so it's very specific that it's not dealing with record of farm. It's not, but.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
So I just had a question. There was mention early on that there are bylaws and protection for these things that you had mentioned in part of your response. I personally haven't seen any in town, could you tell me what those are?
Go ahead.
Because emissions have not come to fruition, I said. We worked with our health on, we wanted to make rules and regulations on all of the livestock and agricultural pursuits in town, it's not come to fruition, but we worked closely with them, trying to make that happen, and then hopefully get it in a while, the rarities, so it never came to fruition, and it has really been, so we are, bringing that to service.
So in the original statement, whether there was bylaws or policies or enforcement, those are actually, we don't have any right now. This is like, well, the state of Massachusetts does, the town of West Wilson does not. Okay, thank you.
We do have, if you have an actual noise complaint, you can bring that to the Board of Health. If there is an animal welfare issue, you can bring that to the Board of Health. Those are already enforceable by the Board of Health. It's our understanding. That's what we're told by the Board of Health.
So I was just, I was asking, clarifying a question, your statement early on is that we had these things in place, and what appeared now was, that was a statement, but actually the reality is, I have not seen one where we know any that are replaced. Have you heard this?
I did not say that.
No, no, I said, there is no, there are no rules. No, okay.
Let's go through the moderator. Go through the moderator. I'm not on a power trip, I'm just going to keep it simple. Okay? Don't get any jolly, okay? Further comment or question from the public? Over here.
Amy Bauer, 57th Main Street. I'm very tired, I know we all are. Very, very late. My shift is at the number. I appreciate that it's increased to ten, but I have friends in Burbank, California, and their limit is twenty-five chickens on sixty-five hundred square foot lots. I think we'd all agree, or slightly more rural in Burbank, California, I've assigned twelve chicken out these way. You're adding, you lose. I just think the number, there's definitely room for changes in that. And I think that's my main number.
Okay, thank you. I might hear. There was a question, and the people are lying. I will come back to you. Just wait for me. Give you another chance.
I have a question. I understand that all the farm animals are different from pet animals. So now, why are we going only after poultry? Because we have pets, because everybody else has pets. And are we going to restrict all the dogs that go to the pound? Because they are, and they make a lot more noise than chickens. And not only that, I mean, my kids are supposed to have, but they are not being nuisance for anybody else, especially for emotional support of the government we have. Why are we going to put a restriction on how many chickens I have? I saw this is not a nuisance for anybody. My cat's roaming around, and my well-handling, and so many other pets. And they are well loved. So why are you restricting pets? And I can go after how many babies do you have? And how many goats do you have? How many cows do you have? So people have pets. I know people who are having goats for a bit. So I think we are only unfed, going only after poultry.
Hey, can you come back and say your name, please? Could you please come back and say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And where you live?
My name is Amala, and I'm sixteen, married, spouse.
Specifically to town, we actually have two licenses on us. Community licenses. Part of the issues that, as I understand...
Can you talk again? I have to find this on the board.
I have to answer you to the mic.
They can't hear you. Can you speak louder into the mic?
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Not to overwhelm you with my chum. The... I think I got a flytrap. We actually do license dogs. But the issue at hand, part of the issue that the Agricultural Commission had, as one reached through the minutes with the Board of Health proposed regulations, regulations promulgated by the Board of Health, not voted on by the town, promulgated, was that they would actually require licenses of all animals. So this was licensing courses and moms and whatever else. Requiring inspections of property. So that was significant among conversations in the November, October, November, December of 2019, Agricultural Commission. The point here is that we're trying to create a structure under which community members and evolving community can come together, understand what to expect, and have a framework to address any issues concerned. Because sometimes, believe it or not, people don't want to come to a resolution. And there's nothing in force of the resolution as currently exists.
Thank you.
There's no noise orders. As a matter of fact, the only type, the only thing you can claim about is what portion of the home circuit is done in the right. Thus, no noise orders.
Thank you. Next comment? I think we're over here. I'm sorry if I got that wrong, but that's what we're doing. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Sandy Luna, 67th Market Parkway, Pumon. And I guess I have a question. So I moved into the town in 2022. From North Rowanass, fifteen, twenty minutes down. I've been an owner of chickens for almost twenty-eight years, my entire life. Just have seven brand-new chickens that apparently are not within the number. I sent an email on December 20th, 2022, five days before I moved into my brand-new house to the Board of Health because I was told I needed a permit for my chickens. This email has not been answered in the last two years. A little concerning. I was looking on the website, for West Boylston, it says there is a requirement for home chickens. I asked, I'm looking to get a permit, I'm moving in, I have three hens, I have a coop, I have a rug. What do I need to do? No answer.
This bylaw, this bylaw clear up any confusion as to what process is, rules of process, what goes, is permitted, what standards there are for conditions outside of regulation that we can't bind on any of that.
So my question is, what prompted this bylaw to come into place that was not from the Board of Health or the agricultural board?
The, although personal experience in navigating the process that's been articulated here, both the Agricultural Commission and the Board of Health have been working on this issue since 2017. Various incarnations of regulations have gone back and forth without answer, without any resolution. Like no plans to bring resolution, even though the minutes, these bylaws, these takes some time, the minutes, acknowledge that there is an issue to be addressed. There's no plan to bring it forward, no plan to fix it because the pandemic was over three years ago. And any pressing issues have completely cleared up by the head of the rule of management report. This isn't the time to move this issue forward because it still persists. The number 2016, the number of licenses 2016 is really important because that starts the conversation as to what should we do about this.
Oh, now consulting the Agricultural Committee?
Without consulting the Agricultural Committee. That has already looked at this several times. Not...
That's enough.
Ashley List, Central Street. So previously, it was said that the right of the farm only applies to properties older two acres, correct?
Under certain circumstances. State law gives it five-plus acres. Under certain circumstances, it's two.
Okay. How many properties in the town of West Boylston own chickens that are less than two acres? Or is it pretty much a majority of the chicken owners in this town are on property less than two acres?
And 100% of residents in town are residential owners.
Okay, boy. So I don't think that we should be voting on this. Did you increase the size for the amount of space per chicken?
No.
Okay, so if you put ten chickens, that all require two square feet of coop space into a coop, all of the responsible chicken owners will realize that that number does not add up. Two square feet per chicken is only enough for bantam-sized chickens. You need to have more bantams in order to get egg production in a place where you can comfortably feed a family two, a family four. I currently have seven laying hens. I still have to buy eggs from the store every week because I only get two and a half dozen next week.
That's understandable. That is interesting.
Fair enough. In order to then replace my laying hens, which will go out in the next year or two from laying, I deserve, I got five, ever, it might go up to 12.
Then there's a further process.
I don't believe that there's enough research done into this, and enough discussion between the Board of Health, Agricultural Committee, and also the people with actual home chickens. I don't think that this was well thought out. And I don't believe that what is put in the bylaw or the requirements is enough to justify that this is for the welfare of the animals because it clearly is not.
No.
Thank you. Over here. We're getting to the point where I'm going to ask you to have something new. So if you're going to reiterate something, reiterate it quickly. You really want to use the comments for something new because it's like, go ahead.
I was talking to 24th Main Street Road. I actually am one of the few people who I think has the intention of having more than two acres. Even though some imply me, I want to say a few things. The first is that even though you made amendments that I can approve, which I'm happy that you're listening to the feedback that you can get, this is still too little, too late. And it was already dissiding to show two of those less-than-home chickens and the way that this was put across, the way that these rules were worded, and the penalties thereof. And this is like, if I went to a car dealership, and I was going to trade in my car, and I started off by offering $100 for my car that's two years old, I would just walk out of the dealership. I wouldn't sit there negotiating. We shouldn't be trying to negotiate like how we edit your current bylaw. We should just walk away from it, vote it down, and move on.
Adrian Mayland, 101 Central Street.
I mean, there's a lot of the wording out here I could pick on, but I'm just so excited to have. So I've never had that. That's a current deal. A chicken enclosure in a residential lot in which the chicken enclosure is located, that's the eagle here, shall be maintained in a condition such to be enclosed and the premises are clean and free from decaying food, filth, dirt, and water, animal waste, and other nuisance. So my first question is, who decides what is filth? Who decides what is nuisance? And as far as the animal waste goes, how is that supposed to end with? Do we bottle chickens around with it? And then the residential lot, so if I don't have chickens, does that mean all rest is supposed to be there?
Welfarely protected.
Go ahead.
Welfarely protected. Welfarely protected, how natural is it?
Well, I understand that. I, when I come into the backyard, I'm a chicken, I know what chickens smell like. So, yeah, I just want to take the driver. I can't stand chickens. It's like exactly the same.
Mr. Morris, you probably might. There wasn't, there's not a question pending. I'd like the two citizens out here to go ahead and give their comment or ask their question. We will, I'm happy to go back to you.
Thank you very much.
Over here. Go ahead.
Catherine Serrano, 98th St. Bruce Street. My question is, there have been ten reports of, um... nuisances since 2016, correct?
I don't really interest in that, but... We have to hear us.
No.
I would question where that number was derived from. I don't, I don't know that there is a central data that is necessarily has to do with everything. You don't, well, I don't have staff currently working in that office that would have even been able to respond with that in the past that unlocks that office of being. So I can't say with any certainty that that is accurate. I'm not saying it's not accurate. I'm just saying I don't know where that number has come from. Perhaps if there's something that has arisen to the level that was brought before the entire Board of Health, perhaps we were able to get that number with complaint calls, complaint emails and the like. I don't, we don't have like a centralized tracking for all of that information. We should, but we don't.
Thank you.
That's the number of nuisance complaints the Agricultural Commission helped resolve.
To that point, we already established there is some nuisance ordinance here in West Boylston.
There's a state nuisance ordinance. They're absolutely...
Okay. That's enough. That's why we go through the moderator. Okay? So there's a representation that there's state law or regulation that applies. There's a question of, is there? Okay, so we know, unless somebody's going to go grab Master General laws and look it up tonight, we're going to move on. So the ten cannot be rock solid, I'd confirm. Okay, so that's where we are. Is there a follow-up question?
Yes. So how many complaints have there been since COVID?
Does anyone know?
I think the answer is no, no. That's not the answer. I think the answer is perhaps there have been no complaints to the Agricultural Commission. But I don't know if you can say differently, but would come through officially with the Board of Health, but...
I know that this year, there was two complaints, and it's helped by them.
How? But I don't know how many complaint calls, complaint emails, like I said previously, we don't have. If they're coming, nuisance often come through the Board of Health.
So my question then is, why was the Agricultural Commission not brought in when those complaints came in?
Okay, I think that's beyond us, okay? So...
So it's in regards to he's saying that we have nothing in place. We may have something in place, but it's not being used.
All right.
The response would be that there is no enforcement authority of the local Agricultural Commission. The Board of Health has enforcement authority if it rises to the level of nuisance or other public health safety welfare. The Board of Health has enforcement authority, the Agricultural Commission doesn't.
That's correct. There is a state nuisance law, and we use it effectively to resolve issues with like chickens. It can be another life.
And that's going to be a dispute resolution after that, because we sue the state.
All right. All right.
You know, for Chef One, the one on Mr. Street, I may or may not be a chicken keeper. Looking at the bylaws, I really don't want to fess up to that. It seems very punitive to me to someone who has had their chickens. And I just want to know when will this go into effect? And is there any sort of grandfather clause for people that already have chickens and sound chickens?
I think the issue, the purpose of promoting this in the first place is to engage a conversation, come to some resolution on an issue that has been kicked down the road in the last thirty-seven years. An issue that has, you know, perfected, died off of the pandemic, not addressed, been ultimately addressed. Seeing this issue all starts, so actually, this might be a point which I can maybe make a statement. In the interest of always having a conversation, because I do believe that we're well-meaning folks all looking to create a system that everybody exists and understands, I would be willing to withdraw my motion and instead make a motion to commit this article back to the Board of Health, the Agricultural Commission, and the Board of Select in the interest of redrafting a meaningful bylaw article in the October time period to address issues of setbacks and health standards, noise, cleanliness, and any other things.
I will take that as a motion to commit. But I think it's, I think it may be premature. So let's hold on to it for a minute. I can. I can say it's out of order. And...
You don't think it was actually...
Right, correct. So let's wrap up, and then if a motion to commit is in order, I'll pass it.
So I will just say, one of the things I found very descriptive was the size of the size sets, that at least twenty-five feet from a property line. I already have a coop. I took great care in building that coop myself. It costs you about $800. I dug down, we put hardware clock, eighteen inches down, so I can protect my chickens. We have hardware clock over the top of it, on the side of it. To move that is going to be, what I consider, excessive. And so now I'm already not compliant with your bylaws.
I'm sure there will be, I'm sure there will be room for movement of the Board of Health. But that said, the idea, I'm not sure.
Not something here to be had?
I'm not sure. My point was, the amendment was to more fully align those setbacks with building standards with the idea being that if you care, you put that care of the building, you shed that kind of care. You just express them. changes its process into building a chicken coop.
And it is less than ten feet from a shed, and it has not, um...
I'm not sure, but so to that point, what I'm suggesting is, I would like to think that the folks in this room engaging in this conversation are people of good faith and good interests, wanting to work with each other. I am willing to withdraw the motion.
That's enough. Thank you for your willingness. You don't need to have the balls to kneel down.
I, I'm going to make a motion to draw.
Your motion is out of order. We're still discussing. Thank you.
I just have one more follow-up comment to turn.
Okay, can you move that one up a little more? If it's fast, all right.
It's about, um, waste and rotting food. Does that mean we can't compost our properties anymore? Because that's why I use my chickens waste-free. Okay, because we feed chickens and we use leaves to garden.
The idea here is just a self-interest scheme kind of thing, and the only reason that I would leave the question is because there's always...
If you wanna move, if you wanna move the question, come up and move it.
I wanted to give you comments. Um, I feel like at this point, there's...
Chase, can you identify who's calling out from the gallery and encourage them to be by at least?
Who realized that this is a same-day ship as far as the vote is concerned, um, which is why I would return with fraud, and frankly, I don't trust anyone on the select board.
That's out of law. That's out of law. How can you, how can you sit up there and say you have the board?
Stop it. Stop. This is why you go through the moderator. Please stop. Your, your comments are in fact out of order. I will ask you to confine your comments to this article and not to any other issues.
I am concerned that if this has had support in its form, either before it came tonight and then with the, the updates, I'm not sure that those are the requirements or the, the skill set or the knowledge of these areas that we should really have these, have them weighing in on these issues. They, they shouldn't be weighing in on issues if they don't have the background. And we know where the board and where the panel sits on this. Um, and the, the entire audience and the Agricultural Commission is on an entirely different wavelength. So with that motion to withdraw, my concern is that, and that somehow gets approved, now the Agricultural Commission, the Board of Health, they have now lost some of that power to come to a more effective resolution that's gonna work with the residents with the chicken keepers and the cattle.
Thank you for your comments. I ask you to hold on for a second.
Excuse me?
Because I'm talking to Cal Council. That's a lawyer. It's a privileged conversation.
Huh?
There are questions of procedure that are not suitable for, um, the public to, uh, listen on at that particular... No, you should not. So, there was a request to move, no, Mr. Marry, see, to move to commit or refer this, uh, this article. And if you want to move that, uh, within a case such a motion.
I'd like to move that.
Is there a second?
No.
Second by Mr. Free. Does anybody wanna discuss this? Hearing, hearing no discussion, this is the motion to commit, to refer it out. And so if you say yes, it'll get referred out, and the committees will do their thing. If you vote no, then it will not get referred out. Then you will need to vote on the article. This is the motion to commit. Because that's the procedure. That's why I had to pump the time card. So, the motion to commit is what is before you. Take it off the table now, send it back to committees to work on it without voting it up or down here tonight. That is what a motion to commit does. Does anybody have a question about that? Okay, so it's kinda like table, but it's a little bit different. So, the motion to commit has been moved as second. All in favor of committing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The nays have it. It is not committed or referred. There is a mo, the mo, therefore, the motion in chief is still before us, and that is that the town approves this bylaw. We will take up two more comments. There are people standing there waiting. So, something new, please?
Yeah, I'm actually told three before and, and called the question. This is on, on, on.
There's a second. Second right there. Uh, fine. This is, calling the question means ending the debate. So you're voting on ending the debate. You're not voting the article. You're voting to end the debate. You understand? Okay. So, if you vote yes, we stop talking about it and then you vote. Okay? All in favor of ending the debate, say aye. Opposed? Debate's over. The, the motion to approve the article is still before us. All in favor of passing this bylaw, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The nays have it. We still, we still have business to conduct. Not a lot, but a little. So please don't leave. If you must leave, please leave quietly. Article twenty-eight, authorization to amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Marry. I know that the town voted approve of Article twenty-eight. Has taken a visit for relating to awards. I'll take any other action related to that.
Is there a second? Explanation?
Yes, Mr. Marry. This article, a monster zoning bylaw, and the zoning map map in compliance with the MTA community registration passed in 2021. West Boylston has been identified as an MTA adjacent community and must zone thirty acres with a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre as of right. Failure to comply with this law will subject to loss of eligibility for certain grant programs. For the communities that tries to comply with the law may be subject to civil enforcement action. The law does not require any housing to be built. So there are a lot more informations on the, the information, uh, information on proposed amendment to the West Boylston zoning bylaw that's a sheet that goes anywhere in the package.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any comment or recommendation?
Selectmen, you've got to start.
Thank you.
The bylaw committee, you're the chairman.
Thank you.
Can I, the board of justice, talk to you?
Thank you.
I, the committee, you're the start.
Thank you. You love us. Very nice. Question or comment from the public?
Nancy, Nancy, to drive the question. Um, and I understand that this is a sort of compliance with the state mandate, correct? Um, and so if we don't go to approve this, this opens us up to, um, the type of litigation in the state, uh, as well as, uh, keeping us from accessing the rest of the land, correct? And so there's the interest of physical responsibility, you know, obviously, we're all here. Um, you know, as a sense of trauma, physical responsibility in this town, it would seem to me that it would be prudent for us to vote this through and or attack us from, um, house litigation, um, from the state and access to future homes.
Thank you.
That party, yes, I'm just curious, what is the upside of the tentative way of litigation? And is there some reason we wanna do this, other than the state saying we should adopt this and we're afraid of the state? Is there, is there another upside? I'm not, I'm not opposed to this or whatever. I'm just curious of what the, if there's some upside to why we're doing this? Or is it just out of concern that we're wanting to?
Let me be careful how I answer this. And so, that's just kind of something. Um, if we did not let pass this bylaw, originally, people, we, we, we were under belief that there were only certain grant programs that we would miss out on. Um, that list has been expanded, and, uh, what we weren't necessarily, it was probably part of the scheme, but we weren't necessarily anticipating this, that the state would take direct action against communities. But we've seen where states are not even compliant, but now they've started to do that. So, um, this, this parcel, if I could just speak about this parcel quickly. This parcel is located on the settlement of town. It's currently owned by the Worcester Country Club. This, this amendment would not require one shred of housing to be built. Um, however, if the Worcester Country Club were to sell the property and somebody wanted to develop fifteen units as a rent, they could do so.
Thank you. Over here.
This, uh, MTA, uh, something very major, rich and full of new construction.
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself as a...
Rich and full of new construction. It requires towns being prioritized in the first place. Uh, would there be anything you'd get, again, by deciding this in the fall meeting? Because there is, uh, lots of studies to do with the six report and some articles in the middle. And to this date, only sixty and one hundred and seventy-seven identified as the GCA have declared the sale of significant assets or not. Might it not be prudent to wait until the fall meeting to the process when we get the house at that level? I don't see anything we have to lose by compressing them down this way.
Thank you. Just move. Go ahead.
Karen, how's the, um, eighty-nine Mall Street? Um, in consideration of this proposal, have you looked at the, um, potential costs for additional town services that would be required, um, school, for example, if we were to, um, to do this and not wait for, for, as the previous gentleman mentioned, just waiting till we actually have to do this? There are a number of towns now that have objected and are, are, why not wait and see what happens?
So that was...
Go ahead.
Um, there is no guarantee that, um, the court will rule in advance of the town meeting on, on this overall, um, action by the state legislature, first of all. Second of all, um, like I said previously, I described this parcel. Um, the likelihood of anything being built here, at least in the near future, is, is very slim. Um, certainly nothing can be built here prior to fall town meeting. We can't guarantee that unless Worcester Country Club has something financially going on. We're not. And then I think, what, there was a, where did this tendency go? There was a third question in there that I don't think I answered.
It had to do with additional town, passing additional town services, like the schools.
Yeah, so, so that's only something that is to be built. I mean, so, so, and, oh, I remember my, what I was gonna say. We talked about towns that, um, have decided to fight this. I think if you look at some of those towns that have, uh, have put up a big opposition, maybe hold it aside, the likelihood of something being built in the near future in those communities, Milton, um, uses as an example, is much higher.
Thank you. Over here.
Uh, Dave Poppin, West Boylston City. We already complied with forty B based on, uh, the percentages of land use. And I think it would be insane to rezone this and make it have the potential to bring fifteen hundred people into the town, which would be a twenty percent increase in the town. We already know schools are, can't pay for what they're doing now. Uh, so, I would, I, I don't see, I don't, I prefer that we fight it, like hold it in and some of the other towns. I think it's very dangerous to play the game of, well, we're gonna zone this and nobody's ever gonna build on it, because someone might have built on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Golden Bond, um, just so I understand, like, it would slow that construction would start in the heat of the fall, but everywhere I go, there's lots of old roads and, and new complexes that are being built everywhere, along Armco Street that turns into Maple.
That was tight. We've been at this one.
So, uh, I've seen the entire street developed.
And, and I can't imagine putting another six hundred units in there. My other concern is, we just voted down a four million dollar proposition two and a half request. And that was before adding these five hundred and eighty-seven potential units that could add twenty percent to our population of power services. And schools are already struggling. How is it gonna be possible for us to remotely accommodate something like this, um, with where we're at? And do the grants that we're losing offset the costs that, that allowing something like this would create?
Move from the town to the, let's move to that.
Not as concerned with the losing of the grants, I'm more concerned with the direct litigation. I'll tell you that if we join in that lock, we can be, we will be amending our legal budget in the fall to accommodate for that, um, one hundred percent. Um, do, personally speaking, do I love this bylaw? Do I think it's gonna create, I mean, uh, this act of legislature, do I think it's gonna create housing in a community like West Boylston? No, I don't. But I think that the planning board, working with Seminole Mass Regional Planning Committee, has endeavored to, to make something that works for this community that has the least impact on this community as possible. Uh, they were extremely, extremely thoughtful in locating. And, and to be honest, we don't know what this, if, if this is voted tonight, we now send this to the state for them to weigh in on, they may outright reject this and say, we don't like your location. So that's another time piece that we need to consider here. Because if they reject it, we need to be in compliance by December thirty-first. We're gonna need to have a new area zoned or be in that, um, litigation position in the fall.
Mark Trudo, sixteen, Luthane. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I disagree with this fundamental idea that we shouldn't have affordable housing in West Boylston. I mean, where the heck are all the people that flip our burgers and, and, and man our small stores and stuff like that that I live? So I just wanna say, I support this, even though it's kind of an act they developed because it might never make it up. But we need people, we need places for people who aren't... But we need people, we need places for people who aren't rich like us to live. Thank you.
To address a couple of concerns, um, the first one, as we talked about, 40B, we, we're complying with 40B because we have metal land use requirement. That's no longer true, they amended that back in 2020. And we're now not in compliance because of that. We're doing some projects with the coal that made resistance, but that's... The other thing is, this is not an affordable housing, uh, by law. This is market rate housing that we provide, we've got nothing to do with affordable housing. They could be luxury markets charging $1,000, which, I don't know, although they may increase our, uh, cost for services, would turn the bricks and patchwork too.
Thank you, just kidding. Okay, uh, this is a vote to end the debate. Uh, if you are in favor of ending the debate, vote yes on this, because that's, that's all we're voting on, is we're going to stop talking about it. We will then take a vote on the article proper, okay? So, on the motion to end the debate, all in favor of ending the debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, no debate. Article 28 is therefore before us. This requires a two-thirds majority. I'm not optimistic about getting any of it. But I'll take it, I can get it. So all in favor of the article as moved, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I can't vote that's two-thirds, so let's hold up our little orange cards. Okay, using your orange card, please, if you are in favor of Article 28 passing, as moved, hold up your card now. Put it down. If you are voting no to Article 28, raise your card. We're going to need the colors. We're going to have to recruit some colors here. There are fewer of us here, hopefully we don't need as many colors. Okay, once the counters are in place, I will ask you to hold up your cards and vote. And there's one more article left, so we're almost done. This is late for us, thank you for your patience. All in favor of Article 28, hold up your card now. All right, counters back in place, please. Now, if you are opposed to Article 28, hold up your card. Hold on while we count. By a vote of 87 to 40, motion carries, the article passes. Article 29. The last article. To amend the zoning map, 115 Shrewsbury Street, 137 Shrewsbury Street, 151 Shrewsbury Street, and 160 Hartwell Street. This is an owner petition, is there a motion?
There is. Our free, I move the town vote to approve Article 29 as written in the warrant, deleting the words, insert description in character text, and inserting in their places following description, approximately 150 feet from sideline of Shrewsbury Street. And by deleting the words, I think any other text.
Second.
Thank you. Third explanation?
Sure. Our business zoning district runs parallel to Shrewsbury Street and extends the 160 feet digital loss on Shrewsbury Street. Beyond the business district are remaining portions of loss in connection to zoning industry. Our client, not our client, the petitioner, seeks to have, uh, one consistent zoning designation on their parcels. They are requesting the zoning district may be moved to the rear of the law following the sideline of the Boston Main Railroad.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any, uh, comment or recommendation? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none, any question or comment from the public? Hearing none, this is also a two-thirds article. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, that's two-thirds. That concludes our business, so we'll now entertain a motion to dissolve the town meeting. All in favor of dissolving town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are dissolved, see you in October.